Good evening. It's seven o'clock and we have a public hearing which will be followed by the Committee of the Whole of the Urbana City Council chaired by Mike Madigan. I'd like to call this public hearing, I'd like to open the public hearing. We have two ordinances. One of them, ordinance number 2015-08-092 is an ordinance amending the city code to increase the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for Soil Restaurant Systems LLC doing business as Dottie's at 1901 South Philo Road. And the second one is ordinance number 2015-08-090, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, and that is a portion of 108 East Water Street. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at, to either one of these subjects at this public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Need to recuse myself.
Okay. You're not going to be voting, it's just a hearing, but anyway, go ahead. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, is there anyone who would like to testify at this hearing? I don't see anybody that wants to, so I will close the hearing. Thank you.
Okay, so, the meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole shall come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons, Mr. Brown, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Madigan, Ms. Marlin, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Smythe, Mayor Pressing.
Here.
All right, so, are there any additions to the agenda at this point? Seeing none, staff reports, we have a proclamation, Madam Mayor.
Okay, this is for National Library Card Sign-Up Month. Whereas the library card is the most important school supply of all, and whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of children and adults, and whereas libraries bridge the learning gap by offering a wide range of digital, print, and other resources, and whereas libraries offer free access to technology and innovative educational and entertainment programming, and whereas libraries continue to transform and expand their services in ways that meet the needs of the communities they serve, and whereas a free library card is the coolest card you can own, now therefore I, Laurel Lunt Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 2015 as National Library Card Sign-Up Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and encourage everyone to sign up for the smartest card at your library. Thank you.
Okay, so, the library annual report.
Thank you very much. So Snoopy Joe Cool is the mascot this year, the celebrity representative for National Library Card Sign-Up Month, so it would be very cool to get Snoopy and get you to sign up for your card. If you would be interested at some point, I would be happy to have a photo opportunity with anyone that would like their picture taken with our traditional 140th anniversary library card, so be glad to have that photo moment with you, and appreciate the opportunity to tell you about what a great job your library has done this year, and how hard your library board has worked. So let's take a quick peek. So this fiscal year, you know, we had some fiscal challenges, and we've done very well given the constraints that we are working under, not being sure where the state budget is, but working with about $242,000 less last year. You have seen an increase in the use of the library. We celebrated 140 years of this community celebrating its library and supporting its library, and the library giving back to its community. We had programming throughout the months, talking about how different departments could serve the community, because not everyone knows all the different things that the library does, and those were very well attended, lots of concerts, lots of events, and talking about how the friends of the library and the foundation support the library and therefore support the community as well. The teen open lab is something we're very proud of. In 2013, the teens got together with staff and talked about how the library could serve them as residents better, and so they have a 3D printer and Makerspace area where you can record video or sound, you can play games, you can do homework, you can work on Minecraft, you can do vinyl cutting, there are any number of things the kids can do to be contemporary with today's, with all the things that kids are doing today in the library. So they are up on digital technologies that, that we of course never saw, and some of the adults in our community haven't seen. So this year, two years, and we've had 6,000 kids come in to do homework and learn about these new digital technologies. And what's important about this is it's the students that are leading us, they're telling us what they want in the lab, they're teaching us, they're showing us how to do different things, use different software packages and such. So this year, we added two sewing machines, and you would be pleased to know that the staff who are using the sewing machines are excited, but the kids, both young women and young men, are using these. We've had actually kids coming in from Champaign, taking the bus to bring their clothes in to either fix them up, or to modify them in different ways to show their creativity. So our community, as well as neighboring communities, are taking advantage of the teen open lab. Circulation is one thing that we look at with libraries, so when we gave this report to the board this month, we had 26,000 items checked out worth over half a million dollars. We're pleased to see that the community still is, is using the circulating part of the collection. Our circulation was down last year, but it's up this year, and the total for the year was over 800,000 items checked out, so we're really pleased to see that. One of the things your board did is they went ahead and changed the number of renewals. This is a little bit in the weeds, but we allow people to renew items more now, it went from two to three, and we saw a big increase in the number of items checked out in part because people could keep an item that they wanted longer if no one else was waiting for it. So again, people being able to use the library and they want, the way they want to. The board worked a lot on infrastructure this year, updating a lot of policies, creating policies that weren't there, making sure everything was up to speed with the Civil Service Commission, we've been updating the staff handbook and manuals, so a lot of credit goes to the board and the staff of working really hard to bring the library to the places that it needs to be to have a good, strong infrastructure to serve the community well. We've had a lot of new partnerships this year. One partnership with the city is the new initiative to Read at the Market. So the first Saturday of the month at the farmer's market is Read at the Market, and the first couple of months we did it, we had between 400 and 500 people visit the library's booth, read, sign up for library cards, check out ebooks, register for summer reading and get balloons. It's been a really great success, and it's been so successful that the people running the Sweet Corn Festival, the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival, have reached out to us, and we will also be manning a table at the festival as well. So we're glad to be able to spread the word about the library resources to our community in many different ways. New coming to the library, we have Member LP Records, vinyl is back, and we'll be starting a collection, we'll be launching that pretty soon, as well as with a grant from Mr. Barack Rosenzweig, we will be starting a hands-on literacy collection. You can see some of the things there, there are some big foamy dice. Some kids learn better in tangible, hands-on tactile ways, so we have a number of math kits and literacy kits, learning how to read kits, that will help support kids and adults learning in different ways, and so we're excited to have these two kinds of collections launching in the next couple of months, and look for more kinds of things like that as well. Local History Online, which has over 700,000 unique items in it, capturing the history and bringing it forward to our public, is 10 years old this year. Now, for people who are out of the area that want to tap into the resources here, they can pay online with a credit card versus having to send checks back and forth. Why is that important? It makes it easier for people to use, and we found that we've seen an increase in revenue, which is always nice to have. We're providing greater service and increasing our revenue. If people are local, they can come in, we would help them do this for free, but for those people who are at a distance, and we have people using this across the world, we're pleased to offer them that opportunity. Also, we received books of Joseph Cunningham that were found in a garage in Texas, then given back to the Cunningham Children's Home, and they very kindly reached out to the library and said, "Would you like to have these books for the Champaign County Historical Archive?" And we said, "Yes, we would be very happy to make these available." So these are kept in one of our bank boxes in Bucie, but we do have Joseph Cunningham's original diaries, and we will be working on digitizing and making these available. But they are, they are really beautiful books, and we're glad to have them, and thankful that the Cunningham Children's Home Board would give them to us. So this is your library, we are doing really well. I wonder if you have any questions for me about the information I provided with the annual report of, from the board to you, and I appreciate your support.
Any questions for Celeste? Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got some. Good report, thanks so much. Of course, I'm tapping into the resources of the library very soon because we have visitors from France coming, and we're going to hold a citywide meet and greet, open to the public, opportunity for people to come and visit, and meet and talk to our new friends from our sister city in France during their visit in September. And I know that you're putting out a poster for that.
And we have an exhibit in our display case right now, talking about the Sister City program in the different locations.
Right. And besides that, we're going to be marching in the Labor Day Parade. Yes. But that's not the question I want to ask you. I saw that you had, you covered a lot of information in the resources that you monitor, you keep track of how many times people check things out and everything, and one of your questions on page 34 was, what information is not currently asked on the Illinois Public Library in a report that would be of interest if it were collected? And it may not be of interest to the AIPAR, or whatever you might call it, but to me, it would be interesting to know. The use of the community rooms, the large and the small, how many times are they used? Who books them? You know, what, well, how, how does the service that's provided by that, how is it used by the public? You know, because I know I've tried to book one or two rooms that are already booked, so another times, you know, they're really open and you can use them freely, so I really appreciate that. And I think it's a resource that is almost like, you know, checking a book out, you know, you're using space in the library, it's community space, and it would be great to know how many people take advantage of it.
I actually have an answer for you, and I'm so happy to hear you say that, because in part, your library board voted just this last month to increase the ability of the public to use the rooms. We used to not open the use of the conference room, the small conference room, until 5:00, and we realized that although staff do use that room frequently, there are many days where no one's using that room, and it didn't make sense not to make it available to the public. So if the library's open, those rooms are available for booking up for nonprofit organizations. The, the rooms were used 474 times last year between the auditorium and the small conference room, and then if you look at the two study rooms on the second floor, those were used just over 1,900 times with reservations. You can also walk in and use those rooms, they fit five or six people upstairs, and we have whiteboards in there now as well.
Great. So you got the information, and I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Diane?
Thank you for the report. My question centers on facility needs and infrastructure of the physical kind rather than the policy kind. You mentioned that, from what I could tell, there were three major outstanding facility needs. One was the HVAC system at 250,000 about, the 1918 arched windows, which are all still single pane and leaking like crazy, which is close to 100,000, and then the Race Street porch, which a 10-year-old estimate was 250,000, and I don't know whether you have a more current estimate, so that's probably 3/4 of a million dollars realistically in, in significant essential repairs that need to be made. Do we have a plan for addressing that, or?
I'm smiling because the libraries, again, the library board looked at the policies, and the finance policy used to say that large capital expenditures were not budgeted for by the library, but would be paid for by the City of Urbana. That's what the finance policy said. Having discussions with the board, we realized that that was, the library board couldn't make the city do that, that that was not necessarily the case. So that the library board has been putting aside money in the budget to start to save money for these capital expenditures. So last year, we put aside under $14,000, and this year, we budgeted 15. That doesn't get us there, it doesn't get us there, so we are actively having those discussions, the board is talking about that, and we'll be looking at what are our options with the HVAC system? When do we think we should plan to replace it? Can we get through one more grant cycle with the state live and learn grant cycle to see if maybe they would pay for up to $125,000 worth of it? Or do we feel like it might fail before the winter is done? The grant cycle is like January through March, so we are actively having those conversations so that we can be responsible stewards of the facility. But the, the plan before had been that the city would pay for it. So we don't see that as the plan right now.
Wow, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, that covered part of my comments, I just wanted to also notice that, or ask the council to notice that the assumption is there would be a 2% increase in the taxi, property tax values next year, and that kind of base, worked into the budget, would still not pay for raises for the library staff next year, which the city staff are getting 3% raises, so if the library staff gets 3%, they would need an increased budget for that. And then just to mention that over the past year, Celeste, Celeste's on a really hard job, cutting hours from people that have been longtime employees, and we're only guaranteed 50 hours, but they were, for years, have been working more than that, so we know there's been a big sacrifice from those employees, and there's been some discontent from those employees because they feel like it should have been shared more evenly. So it's a difficult situation to be in, and nobody envies you at that position, that, those choices you have to make. So I guess in the future, it might be interesting to see if the library board should have to, should come up with some kind of staff reduction policy that would guide those decisions that you might be able to use to, to guide your decisions.
Aaron?
So I'm looking at the different positions, I don't know if, if I'm looking at the right area, but you can tell me, are there openings now? Are you all looking to fill some sort of openings at the library right now?
We have two positions currently, just posted on our website actually, we had two people leave, and we are looking to hire three people. They were, there was two part-time positions, and we'll be filling it with three part-time positions, hourly and part-time benefited.
Now, am I looking at the right places? Do you need a master's degree for those positions?
Oh, I'm sorry, different position. So between, right when I started, we were in the budgeting process, and that's when we found out that there was going to be a decrease to the budget, given with keeping property taxes flattened with the Coral money coming out of the budget. So we held one position open, the IT manager, for months until we found the right candidate, but we also held open a librarian position, someone as an interim library director for the adult services department, but we didn't fill her librarian position. So at some point, we would like to be able to do that, but currently, that position is open, and the way this question is asked is, are there any positions open? So we've, we've currently taken that position out of the budget because there is no money for it. Now, we also just received notice that one of our librarians has taken a position in Colorado, so we will look to fill that position, but we'll look at the whole picture and see what it is the library needs, and how we'll, how we'll fill that person's role.
And so when we advertise this, when you guys advertise for the library, is it just the newspaper? I mean, how, what are the mechanisms of advertising and stuff?
We actually aren't going to advertise the couple of positions that are part-time in the newspaper, we have posted it on our website, it's going to be posted through the library school at the U of I, and also it's linked to on your website at the city as well. And then one of my jobs this week is actually to reach out to you, Sister City Council members, because you know who in your constituents might be looking for different kinds of positions, and I want to let you know what we have open and why I think it might appeal to people that live here in Urbana.
And so the part-time positions that you spoke of, are those, those don't require master's degrees, or they do?
One of them is a part-time 20-hour-week librarian that will require a master's degree, and then one is a clerical position, both in the Champaign County Historical Archives, that doesn't require the degree, and then we'll have another position, we have circulation positions open regularly, and we look for people to apply for those in an ongoing manner, and those do not require master's degrees either.
And do you, is it just a lot of women who are librarians? Is that what this is? Because I don't see very many men listed on the thing here, I just thought I'd ask.
There are a lot of women in the library profession, yes, but we do have a number of men on staff as well.
Okay, thank you.
It's because women are smarter.
Nice, nice try.
Eric?
So I'll just pass on to you an experience that I had. Naomi and I were taking a trip recently, and we wanted to stock up on some folk music CDs. And I noticed, so in your CD sections, you always have, for particularly prominent people, you have these upright dividers, Tom Paxton, whoever. So, but what I point, I pointed out to your staff person, I don't know if, how far it got back, that there was not a, single one of those was a female performer.
Huh.
And so I made some specific suggestions about female performers who might merit special mention. I actually got a few CDs of a performer named Eliza Gilkison, but obviously, there are many who would merit that, but, so I think that is, was a pretty glaring disparity, and I would hope that that would be remedied for all of the folk music fans who patronize the library.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next, we have approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, August 10th. Is there a motion?
So moved. I'm sorry.
Libby's jumping up in the seat here, so we have an addition, all right.
Just additional staff report, I have a reminder for everyone that our August food truck rally's happening tomorrow. So lunchtime tomorrow, 11 till 2. This is at the Civic Center in the west parking lot, and the food trucks scheduled to come are the Bento, Burrito King, Chester's Barbecue, Dragonfire Pizza, Empanada's House, Fusilli Tony's, new this month, Kona Ice, ROK Rocks Korean Barbecue Tacos, and the Pop Stop. Celeste had mentioned Sweet Corn Festival, and that's coming up this weekend, so Friday night, all day Saturday, lots of corn, lots of music, lots going on, so check it out. We'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, August 10th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, moved by Aaron, seconded by Dennis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. So, public input, here we go. I have Steve Bridges, who wishes to address the committee before the agenda item relative to the consent decree for the landfill. You have five minutes, sir.
Mayor Pressing. Oops, is this on? Ladies and gentlemen of the Urbana City Council, my name is Steve Bridges, I live two counties away in rural Wapala, but we share one thing in common, that's where we get our drinking water, the Mohammed Aquifer. I am a volunteer with the Mohammed Aquifer Protection Alliance. Our group was formed in 2013 in part to help publicly support the goals of the intergovernmental coalition. I have worked side by side with Joe Hooker and Steve Carter, opposing the permitting of a US EPA TOSCA chemical waste landfill, and promoting the sole source aquifer. The coalition's success in designating the Mohammed Aquifer as a sole source aquifer, the, the first in Illinois, will provide much-needed protection to the aquifer. The pressure put on Springfield by the coalition resulted in the Illinois EPA rescinding the permits for the TOSCA PCBs and the hazardous MGP waste streams. As a result of the coalition efforts, Clinton Landfill officially withdrew their TOSCA application with the US EPA on May 29, 2015, closing the chapter on the TOSCA PCBs in Duett County. It seemed like a tall task at the time, but the coalition independently achieved its goals of stopping the TOSCA PCB landfill and stopping the hazardous MGP waste. The cooperation of so many local public bodies to protect its people is unprecedented in our state. The elected leaders should be proud of this accomplishment, it's truly an efficient and effective model, which is why I'm scratching my head on why this consent decree is being pushed on the coalition by the Illinois Attorney General. I'm having a real hard time figuring out who is really doing the consenting here, and why it's even being considered by the coalition. The landfill is allegedly offering up the promise not to apply for another TOSCA landfill in Duett County over the aquifer. The thing is, they already pulled their TOSCA application, and we know now that their current siting doesn't allow it. With the federal sole source designation, the chances of them ever getting another federal TOSCA permit on that site are slim to none. The landfill is also supposedly offering not to accept more hazardous MGP source material at Clinton Landfill Number Three. Again, this seems like an empty promise, given that the Illinois EPA already pulled their permit for that waste stream, and the success of the Ammons-Bennett bill, all MGP must now be tested as being hazardous. But that means that hazardous MGP source material can only go into a permitted hazardous waste landfill, which Clinton Landfill Number Three is not. So the landfill is basically offering what they have already lost. In return, the coalition is being asked to give a huge concession by giving their blessing to leave some 60 million pounds of toxic MGP source material already buried some 50 yards from our drinking water. For four years, the coalition has challenged the protectiveness and the compatibility of the landfill liners with this waste, and suddenly, you're expected to be okay with it. This decree goes against all the founding principles of the coalition. In addition to the toxic waste amnesty, they also threw in some special demands about future McLean County and Champaign County Waste Transfer Stations, and special concessions for the Mohammed Valley Water Authority. I was told these were added to make the landfill happy. Again, you have, you have to ask, who is really consenting here? I'm afraid you're being offered a pig and a poke. The landfill is offering what it has already lost, and you will be giving up your statutory discretion. You will be entangled in an unfavorable and messy consent decree for the life of the landfill. Coalition oversight of the decree will be difficult since you are not being offered any independent inspection rights. And even if you do claim a violation, it will be a judge sitting in Duett County that will have the final say. This arrangement will be far, far from excellent. You have, you already have excellent, the goals of the first complaint have been met. I'm not a lawyer, but it seems that the prudent option would be to simply withdraw your first complaint in the appellate court.
You have one minute, Mr. Bridges.
Okay. This option will free up your funds to pursue other objectives to protect our water, if you choose, without being entangled in decades of legal cost. The long and the short of it is that the consent decree will absolutely guarantee a persistent threat to our drinking water. That is certainly not excellent, it's failure for the people of central Illinois. If you want to do what is excellent for the people and our drinking water, you will step away from this lopsided decree and leave your options open. If you want to do what is excellent for the landfill, sign the decree, protect their bottom line, and be entangled. It's that simple. All I ask is that you take your time, ask the hard questions, ask why the AG must have your consent for this toxic waste. It certainly doesn't benefit the coalition or the people of Illinois. Please do not rush into a decision that will impact the people's water for generations to come. There is no compromise when it comes to clean drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Spencer, in opposition to the same issue?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing everyone to speak tonight. My name is Bill Spencer, I'm before you tonight representing Watch, Watch Clinton Landfill. Watch has been engaged in this issue of placing chemical waste landfill inside of the Mohammed Aquifer for eight years this week. On day one, Watch's goal was, no toxic chemical waste landfill. Today, that goal is still number one, and just as important as it was eight years ago. This sign has not changed in eight years, and it's no less significant today. I would like you to have this sign to remind you of what the public wants. Illinois EPA, along with Clinton Landfill and its business partner, Duett County Board, set a goal eight years ago too. It was yes to a toxic chemical waste landfill. It's easy, no toxic chemical waste landfill, and our water is safe. We all can understand what is driving Clinton Landfill and its business partner, Duett County Board. It's money, the root of all evil. But what about the Illinois EPA? What does the agency really want? It is easy, they want to preserve themselves. They do this by enrichment. To them, enrichment is not money, it's power. For the agency, the Illinois EPA, the only place to get power is to get elected officials to give it to them. One would have to ask, how does the agency, the Illinois EPA, go about this enrichment process? Why would elected officials give up their authority and give it away? It is always the same way, by the simple way, of the promise. authority and give it away? It is always the same way, by the simple way, of the promise made by the agency, the Illinois EPA, guaranteeing to elected officials that they will take care of all of their problems. Just trust us. You won't have to deal with this. We will take care of it for you. Watch asks you tonight to not relinquish your authority to the agency, the Illinois EPA. Holding office, voting, and paying taxes are part of the core principles of our nation. The agency, the Illinois EPA, is not elected and does not speak for the people, and more importantly, does not allow the public to speak to them. Watch asks for you to speak for the people and say, no toxic chemical waste landfill, to the agency, the Illinois EPA. Again, thank you for allowing all of us the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have Teri Hoffman. Let me turn that on. Next, we have Teri Hoffman, who wishes to speak at the ti-- I'm sorry, before the agenda item.
Thank you. This is on the consent decree. I have read it in the last week that it was presented to us, or we found out about it. We all have one thing in common. We all use Mohammed Aquifer water. This consent decree that is that I've looked over, that has been before you, it's hard to understand how we are going to let our water be ruined by this landfill, by the toxic waste that is being put here. I started in 2010 on this, and I'm from DeWitt County, and I'm also on the DeWitt County Board. But I started in 2010 with Watch. Watch was very instrumental in this, and they have been from the start. The coalition has even worked very closely with Watch. But when the consent decree has come out, Watch has not once been contacted to see what their reaction is on that, what their thoughts are, what the actual facts are. Watch presents the facts. It's nothing that they just pull out of the air. So this consent decree, if you have read it and studied it, it is not for the people. It is not for the safety of the water. In 2008, there was two referendums in DeWitt County, which did not affect this county, I understand that, or this city. But both times, the people, 70 to 74 percent, said no toxic waste landfill here. The elected officials disregarded that, went behind the back door, and let it happen. So then, last year on the election, there were two referendums out, one in DeWitt County again, and one in Piatt County. DeWitt County was 90 percent of the voters, the people, said no toxic waste landfill. 94 percent Piatt County people said no toxic waste landfill. DeWitt County went ahead earlier this year and basically gave the landfill the authority to go ahead and keep the toxic chemical waste landfill there again. The majority, the overwhelming majority of the people, and I'm sure it's the same here in this city, Champaign, Urbana, all your coalition members, toxic waste is not wanted over our water. We know what we're getting, and it's polluting us. If not us, it will our kids. And I guess I got on the board in 2012 as an opponent to the toxic waste landfill. I am one of the main ones who brought forward the resolution that we felt, the board felt, that there was a sighting that should have been required before this toxic waste came into the landfill. That is what started this whole issue, from the coalitions, the governor saying, hey, let's stop this, the modifications by the EPAs, MOD 47, 48, which restricts the MGP's and the PCBs. So I've been on it from the start. Everybody else has jumped on board behind us, which is great, but let's not falter now, and that's what we are doing if we let this consent decree go through without the people seeing what's being--
You have one minute, Mr. Hoffman.
Okay, thank you. Put before us. Now, I forgot what I was saying. So it is an issue. I live two miles from the landfill. I am on the Mohammed. I am a farmer. So I know the issues with this. I've worked very closely for several years with the Attorney General's Office prior to all the appeals and the start of the citing questions. So I'm very informed on it. Some of the legals, such as I know yourselves, the legals kind of lose us somewhat. But toxic waste, this close to our water supply, and God gave us this supply. It wasn't just put out there from nowhere. We are expected to protect it. Do not pass this consent decree tonight. Let's put some more thought into it, and let's stop the toxic waste from coming into this landfill. Thank you.
Dennis has a question. Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, could you come up again? Just for my own clarity on this. So the landfill has accepted waste in the toxic waste or chemical waste?
Yes, MGP waste in 2011, it started coming in.
So there is waste in there?
In the west side is where they accepted. It's the chemical waste unit, toxic waste unit, is divided in two sections. The west part, which I'm not for sure acreage-wise how big it is, it's 22 acres, I believe.
Right.
On the west half of it is MGP waste. On the east half of it, they are now bringing in the coal combustion residuals, which is, if you'd all Google that and look up and kind of study it a minute, it's it's pretty comparable to MGP, except a little worse. But and it's being allowed kind of the same way through a special use, a special waste. So it's it's being used on the east side. It is being kept separated at this moment. There's been nothing else other than some salt product put on top of the MGP waste.
So, okay, I'm just to get a just to get my thought straight about what's happening and what's already happened. So waste, and you would say a toxic waste or chemical waste. Are you saying that the chemical waste is toxic waste? Is that, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's we're talking about the same thing. All right. And so some has been already in the landfill. And my understanding is that this plan would stop it, and then they would put a cap on it of a foot thick clay soil. And according to the original document that was signed in 2008, they were going to then fill the rest of the landfill up to some degree with just general waste, municipal waste. Is that correct?
Not here.
Not here, okay. All right. So anyway, this would cap it, and it would put a one-foot-thick clay top on it, which is supposed to keep water out, and so there's no permeability, supposedly, right?
Correct.
Correct. That's what this that's what the settlement says would be a solution, right?
Yes.
Right. Now, when when the waste location was created, they had to put down, there was an engineering thing that required them to put down various levels of thickness of first- to-clay soil, then a geomembrane that was supposed to be impermeable, and I think maybe something else, I can't remember, before any waste was actually put into the landfill. So that was supposed to be like a basket to hold anything from seeping.
Correct.
Right. So if there's waste there already, but we're agreeing not to do any more waste depositing, does Watch is Watch not happy because what they want is remediation of the existing thing? Or is it that they're just saying that if we don't, if we agree to do this, then we don't have any more actual actual control, except for taking them to court in case there's a, what, a leakage, there's seepage, or there's an issue?
I think the issue from from the start with Watch is that it was it is toxic waste. There's 30,000 ton of it. The liner that it is that is underneath this waste, if you would look at the reports, and I don't have those before me, so I can't tell you exactly, but I'm sure one out here would give that to you. The liner was not tested to be compatible with the MGP waste. It was tested for PCB waste, because that is what was to be put into this chemical waste unit. The MGP came unexpectedly before that. So there is a big issue with the liner with not being compatible. So so what if we put another foot of clay above the MGP? What we're concerned is the liner below, which there was supposed to be five foot of waste when they took us out, or, excuse me, five foot of clean cover material over the liner. The board, the county board, went out to visit the chemical waste unit with the landfill, asking us to come out there, before I was on the board. That was been four or five years ago. At that time, there was concrete and rebar that was in the clean material, and there are pictures of that. And there's a big concern of that, of how that could take place. They were also, there's pictures of--
So it wasn't really clean? There was debris in it? It should have been just, what, solid clay or soil?
Well, yeah, clean fill material, and that was per pictures it was taking at the time of that meeting of the rebar and the concrete that was within that five foot. So that's a big concern. And then, as they were starting to fill this landfill, this chemical waste unit, there was water on top of the fill and within contact of the liners that it appeared to be. And they were pushing the waste directly onto that. So there are a lot of issues that need addressed, and they're still there. So it's not just wanting to keep fighting. It's and it was a fraudulent application for this permit, for the application that the landfill, when they applied for their permit, the application with the US EPA. From what the governor came with, and the EPAs, they called it a fraudulent information when they filled out the permit, or that the application.
So that's interesting to hear. And is Watch's hope that instead of just approving it to be capped, are you expecting that there would somehow be funds to, what, excavate and take it someplace else? Or do you have that, I mean, are you going in that direction? What, I mean, without capping it, what is what is possible to do? There's nothing else, no other choice, is there?
The waste was put in there illegally. The waste should be removed. It was never cited, and we have asked the citing question. I've asked the citing question. The board has asked the citing question. You read the law on the citing issue. For this new waste stream, a citing should have taken place. The law was broken. Do you allow it to stay that a way? The waste was put in there illegally, so the waste should come out if it was not supposed to be there. It was never approved by the citizens. It never come before the public, which it was supposed to have done in the 39.2.
Thanks. Thanks for your answer.
Well, thank you.
Diane?
Mr.--
Sir?
No, 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 no. I don't want to. I just would request the chair out of deference to the dozens of people who want to speak tonight. If we could, if the council could limit our discussion and questions at this stage of public input so that we can hear from people.
Thank you. Okay, next would be Sherri Brown, on the same topic.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wish to speak on concerns that I have with a possible precedence set by the consent decree with Clinton Landfill if you vote to approve the decree as currently drafted. I believe these possible precedents should be researched before you vote to approve the decree. If it took eight years to get to this point, taking a few months to assure that we don't make a mistake, like the DeWitt County Board did in 2007 by approving this landfill, would be justified. Is there really any harm in waiting to have the proper legal research completed to assure that no adverse precedents are set? Why wait? Because this decree allows what would have been considered a hazardous waste landfill in the past to operate as a chemical waste unit, or CWU, directly over the Mohammed sole source aquifer. The Mohammed is the only and irreplaceable drinking water supply for over 750,000 people in 14 counties across central Illinois. That includes the city of Urbana. As currently drafted, the decree acknowledges the revocation of the CWU's permit by former Governor Quinn and the Illinois EPA in July of 2014. The permit was revoked because the landfill falsified its application, and the Illinois EPA was looking the other way. The decree does not reverse that revocation. It simply asks you to approve the continued operation of the CWU despite the revocation of its permit and for you to look the other way forever. Is that right? In fact, if approved, you will be voting to prohibit you and anyone in the future from ever legally challenging the CWU's continued operation without a permit. Is that fair to those who may face problems in the future? Is that even legal, or is that an illegal contracting a way of your, excuse me, and future council police powers? Do you know if the Illinois Environmental Protection Act criminal penalties for falsifying applications will be undermined if the decree is approved as currently written? If all one has to do to get a permit is falsify the application and hope that the Illinois EPA is looking the other way, what message is that sending to other landfills, wanting to put another hazardous waste landfill somewhere else, maybe even here? Are you honestly going to vote to allow something to continue operating that has been confirmed by a governor and the Illinois EPA that its owners obtained by lying? One of the coalition's attorneys has stated that the landfill may have lied to get the permit, but the permit was issued. Nonetheless, and the mistake is the Illinois EPA's, I believe the legal right they talk about is equity estoppel. Are you sure someone can establish that legal right through their own lying? These are the significant issues. You deserve that they be thoroughly researched before you vote. The people of the city of Urbana deserve that they be thoroughly researched and understood before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the same topic, Chris Store in support.
I'll send a letter at a later date.
Okay, thank you. So finally, and on the same topic, Jennifer Putnam Putman in support.
Hi, I'm Jenny Putman of Urbana, and I'm here as a member of the Board of Directors, along with Phyllis Clark of the Champaign County Healthcare Consumers. We are co-sponsors along with 14 other organizations, and most recently, or among the most recent, the city of Urbana, in sponsoring a community meeting on Saturday, September 19. I'm here to say thank you to the city of Urbana for joining with other entities, including the city of Champaign, in sponsoring this event. And Mr. Madigan, I have an announcement. Could I bring, I have for each person at the panel here. And I'd like to ask if, I don't know the what rules govern the placement of pamphlets in your public information kiosk in the lobby. in the lobby. Maybe if, after you took a look at this, I could call the mayor tomorrow and see if, if I could place some of these in the lobby? Just, it's announcing the event. And thank you so much for your co-sponsorship.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Patricia Avery with regard to Urbana Arts Council Grants.
Good evening. I have coming before you some members of our Superstar Program. It is a summer-long performing arts program, and we just came out here to say thank you for approving the, we, we got a small Urbana grant, Arts Council Grant from the Creative Mix category, and we just really just wanted to say thank you. We want to say thank you to Pauline Tanos, who is your Public Arts Coordinator. She was very helpful when we applied for this grant. And just on August 15th, our Superstars had their final competition, and we had three winners. We have our up-and-coming and our first-place winner with us tonight, which is Grace. We call her Amazing Grace. We just, we really just wanted to say thank you. But I wanted to say our kids got an opportunity to get a civics lessons tonight. They learned about the library board, and they also heard how important it is to keep our water safe. So as we are going to say thank you, I, I wrote some notes down, because I would be opposed to any, anything that would contaminate our water. The Mohammed Aquifer is important to all of us, as we can enjoy really good drinking water in Champaign County. So as they are going to say thank you in a few moments, I want you to add that to the list. Thank you for protecting our, our water source. We also want to, and we just wanted to tell you that the, the CU Superstars Program also one year, every year we give an award out to some wonderful person in the community that supports our program. And we gave the Shining Star Award to your former colleague Carol Ammons, who is now our state representative. We know that Naomi Jacobson always supported the Superstar Program, so we really just thank the council for, for supporting us. It's really tough this year, because we do, you know, the state, the state has not approved a grant, and even though the Superstar Program is 100% supported by the communities, we, the organization is almost 100% supported by the, by the state. So we really appreciate the $2,500 grant that we got. We just want to tell you that we had 30 auditions, and over half of those auditions were students from Urbana High School. 11 finalists, and we had three up-and-coming and two alternatives, and half of those students were from Urbana High School. We have 15 performances, and our next performance is at the Sweet Corn Fest, and we would like to invite you to come out. We're going to be on the One Community Stage at 2:15 to 2:45. So if you haven't got a chance to catch one of their performances, which this would make our 15th performance, you still have an opportunity to do so. We did have one of our largest crowds at the Jettie Rhodes Day in Martin Luther King Park, and like we said, we're looking forward to our upcoming event. This gentleman sitting right next to me is Lamar Browning. He is one of our vocal coaches. The, the young people that are in the program get vocal coaching and performance coaching all summer long, free of charge, and he is one of their coaches. And so he's here with me. I don't know if you wanted to say anything, Lamar? And I have one of my parents that are here. We just have a small group, because you know, once school gets started, these young people, they have a lot of other things to do, like extracurricular activities, many of them work or are participating in other sports. If you don't have anything to say, why don't we just let them? Did you have anything to say, Ms. Whitfield? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Tamika Whitfield. I'm a 7th grade math and avid teacher at Edison Middle School, and I just want to thank the Urbana community for allowing this program and supporting this program and giving a grant. My daughter is Ashanti Butler. She was an up-and-coming star, and she auditioned at nine, and she's 10 years old, and you all have given her a forum to become a star, really. And I really appreciate it, and I thank you, and I'm available for community service if you all need me over here in Urbana.
Okay, why don't, why don't we just-
So before they come and sing, okay, I am Lamar, I didn't really want to say anything, because I let them speak for themselves, but this is a great program. Please understand, this is just not a talent show. This is a great program for these kids to grow. I have to say, 2009, I was a superstar winner. I have gone on to do great works. I am an actual gospel artist. I've been on Bobby Jones, I've done things with that. So this is not just a, you know, your everyday competition. This is something big. These kids are getting great, great experience. So, well, they're going to come and sing their rendition of "Thank You," and I hope you guys enjoy it. I heard Shani B., this is Shani B., I heard her say, "We're going to live this thing up." So, they're going to liven it up for you guys, so be amazed. This is your Superstars singing "Thank You." We are so excited.
And thank you for fighting to keep our water clean.
Eric?
I, I, I just wanted to say thank you, and the recent, you didn't see me clapping, but it's because I knew that I would clap off the beat, because I'm really a klutz that way.
All right. So next, we have Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Ellen Underwood, Evelyn Underwood, regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. They do not wish to address the committee, but continue to be concerned about the sewer problems in the subdivision. Okay, so the rest of the public input cards that I have indicate that these folks wish to speak at the time of the agenda item. So, we appear to be having another one come up here. Envelope, please. It's another at the time, so, all right. So with no more public input cards, we will move along to the business on the agenda. So the first item is agenda item number five, a resolution approving a consent decree, decree, easy for me to say, to settle all claims and a citizen's complaint filed with the Illinois Pollution Control Board by the city of Urbana and other units of local government against Clinton Landfill, Inc. All right, so, how do we start this out? Madam Mayor?
We're going to call on Joe Hooker, who's the Assistant City Attorney from Champaign, and who has worked on this for many years.
Okay, Mr. Hooker.
Thank you. At the outset, let me get a clarification. I'm not going to be able to do this in five minutes. I don't know if that's all I have.
That was a public input portion, so you're free to go.
This is, needless to say, as you're aware from seeing reports about it, a very, very complicated issue. And it's somewhat painful to be recommending approval of a consent decree that's been objected to by so many good people that I've been working with over the years on this particular project, but I can say that we very enthusiastically support this proposed consent decree. And I'd like to address a couple of points at the outset, dealing with some unfortunate emails that have been circulating around suggesting that the intent here is to somehow rush this through, so that the public really doesn't have a chance to look at it, suspect, or suggesting that it can't withstand scrutiny, essentially. And I, I needed to make a few points about, to put things in context, as far as what we're dealing with. We're dealing with a consent, a settlement of two pending lawsuits, to begin with. So, and the attorneys who've been working on this very actively, including the fine attorneys in the Attorney General's Office, our two outstanding private attorneys, David Wentworth and Albert Entinger, and myself to some degree, we've been discussing this since sometime in March. There's been active negotiations going on. There's been a lot of discussion going on, and in the meantime, we've had to get multiple continuances of scheduling of oral arguments in our appeal before the 4th District Appellate Court. Many of you may remember that we have a pending appeal from the dismissal of our citizen's complaint by the Pollution Control Board in the 4th District Appellate Court. All the briefs had been completed. All that remained was oral argument, and that would have happened several months ago but for the settlement negotiations. The reason I bring that up is we're not the only ones who are controlling the timing of this. We can't continue to get continuances from the appellate court to continue oral argument. There's also another pending lawsuit before the Illinois Pollution Control Board in which the, in which Clinton Landfill is appealing from the Illinois EPA's more recent permit modification, challenging its legal validity. That matter also has been continued numerous times during the negotiations. So there is some time pressure to get this settlement resolved or move on with the litigation. And so I wanted to share that context with you to give you some idea about why we've been trying to organize getting the 14 members to review this and, and consider it in the coming month. It's not a matter of keeping it secret from the public, it's a matter of getting the thing settled before we're forced to continue the litigation and perhaps relinquish the opportunity to settle. The other thing I'd, I'd point out is that the city of Champaign did issue, as you're, I think are aware, a press release with a link to the actual consent decree. It's out there in the public, and that's a couple of weeks before the city is scheduled to, of Champaign's can, scheduled to consider it on September 1st, and, and several weeks before any of the other members are going to continue it. So, and, and that's somewhat unusual in a settlement of a lawsuit. I think you'd understand from your past experience. So, we've been, it's been a real logistical challenge to schedule and figure out how to get all 14 of our members to actually act on this, and of course, each one of them will be acting on it at a public meeting, and those meetings have been scheduled throughout the month of September. So I guess I would respectfully suggest that, that, that this consent decree is going to be out there for comment and scrutiny for quite some time for a settlement of, of ongoing litigation, and I think that has to be put into context. And certainly, let, and let me just review the key features of the consent decree. The main ones from our standpoint is that Clinton Landfill would be prohibited from accepting any waste in the chemical waste unit, that they could not accept in a municipal solid waste landfill, which was approved back in 2007. So even though they have a chemical waste unit that they created that was actually designed to hazardous waste landfill standards, under this decree, they will not be able to dispose of anything that would not be something they could accept in the larger landfill number three, which is a municipal solid waste landfill. They, that, that includes, of course, regulated, TSCA-regulated PCB waste and manufactured gas plant source material, that's manufactured gas plant waste that has more toxic concentrations of constituents in it. They would not be able to accept those anywhere in the facility. They've also committed, and this is not something that we could achieve with our lawsuit, frankly, they've, they've agreed to never seek permission from the US EPA or from the state of Illinois to dispose of any manufactured gas plant source material or PCB waste anywhere in DeWitt County located over the Mohammed Aquifer. So we think that was a pretty significant concession for them to make, and a very important component of this particular proposal. As you've also heard, they've been, agreed to apply a one-foot-thick layer of impermeable clay soils on top of the waste that have already been accepted, as, and for the reasons that were suggested in the earlier comments, to basically prevent rainwater and leachate from future waste from reaching that waste. They'll have to have a laboratory that holds proper state EPA certification, performs semi-annual testing of the groundwater for the list of chemicals that are commonly found in the MGP waste during the remainder of the active period of the landfill, which typically goes for 30 years, so do the math, 30 years from when they started accepting the waste in 2011, and for the entire post-closure period, which is a minimum of 30 years. If there were irregularities in testing, that, that post-closure period could be extended, but it's a minimum of 30 years. Importantly, they will have to continue to comply with all legal requirements for operating and monitoring a landfill in Illinois, a permitted landfill. So this decree in no manner, shape, or form relaxes any of the requirements that they're, they're bound to follow, and, and it has that additional semi-annual requirement of testing for all of these components with, of manufactured gas plant waste. Clinton Landfill, as you know, it would be permitted to leave the waste that they already accepted in the landfill, and we believe that's a reasonable concession for the simple reason that we are having a hard time imagining a court, frankly, ordering them to dig that stuff up and remove it. And the thing that is important to understand, as far as the basis for that belief, is the regulatory history of this. The Illinois EPA did indeed, and this is not a matter of dispute, grant permission to the landfill to start accepting that waste. This was with permit modification number nine, modifying the permit of the larger landfill number three. There's a very, very serious factual dispute about whether Clinton Landfill indeed did mislead or falsify their application. Clinton Landfill is categorically denying that. There's some indication in the record that they may be correct. So the notion, there's a factual dispute on that question, and we don't know what the outcome would, will be if we continue with the litigation before the Pollution Control Board. It may very well be that they will agree with the landfill and determine that the Illinois EPA was incorrect, and there was no misleading or falsification of, of the application, but it was rather the agency making a mistake in determining that this was not a new facility. And that changes everything. There's a body of case law that suggests that in that sort of situation, the landfill company is not technically, or cannot be technically, in violation of the Act until and unless actual pollution is detected from the waste that's in the facility. So a general notion I want to leave with you is there's, the facts are very complicated here, there's, there's some very serious factual disputes going- There's some very serious factual disputes going on. It's not nearly as black and white as being suggested by some of the activists, I have to say. I understand why they're not happy that the waste that's in there is not going to be removed, but again, it's the considered judgment of our very skillful attorneys and the attorneys in the Attorney General's office that even if we were to pursue our litigation, very, very unlikely that a court is actually going to order them to excavate that. Another reason that that's unlikely, aside from the Illinois EPA having given approval to accept that waste, is that there is concern expressed by the regulating agency, Illinois EPA, that to exhume this waste at this time could damage the integrity of the existing protective structures in the landfill. I think some people are disagreeing with that conclusion. That said, the Illinois EPA, that's their position. I don't, I think it's not an unreasonable position to take, and that's the position they will take if we continue with the litigation. And even if we were to seek a court order to have that removed, we can anticipate the Environmental Protection Agency will say, "That's not a good idea." So that's something we have to factor in as far as the likelihood of getting a court order to have them remove all those substances. Another key feature of this is that the Illinois Attorney General and the Illinois EPA, on behalf of the state, will continue to reserve the right to fully prosecute any future violations that may occur as a result of the waste that is going to be allowed to remain in place. What do I mean by that? I mean that if in some, at some future date, there's actually detected some pollution that can be attributable to that waste, the state in no way, shape, or form gives up the right to fully prosecute a criminal and/or civil case and to ask for appropriate remedies to remedy that situation. So very important to understand that. That could conceivably end up with the Attorney General and/or the, through the Illinois EPA, seeking an order to have that waste exhumed, exhumed at some future date. It would depend on all the circumstances, and we can't anticipate what all those would be if, if at some future date, there was some contamination detected. But that's the normal course of things. That's the way the law operates right now. And to a large degree, for reasons I'm sure you can appreciate, we have to negotiate a settlement based on what the law is, not what we would like the law to be. And I have to say that some of the suggestions being made by the opponents of this, frankly, are a notion of, "Let's try to change the law through our lawsuit." We just don't have the ability to do that. Our lawsuit has a very narrow scope. At the outset, it was intended to get us back before the DeWitt County Board for a local sighting hearing, a hearing at which that board would have to consider all the evidence, and conceivably could grant approval for this particular facility. So, and I have to say, I think our attorneys did a masterful job, came up with a very creative approach to this. A number of other attorneys I talked to thought, "Well, you can't accomplish that. They already granted this permit modification." So it's important to understand that this is a very unusual lawsuit, and frankly, I think the consent decree basically provides a much better outcome than many of us expected, to be quite frank. But I think it's a good outcome, given the very strange procedural history of this matter, the fact that the Illinois EPA did at the outset grant approval for this, and that the landfill accepted that waste pursuant to that approval. And you'll have to bear with me, there's a lot of detail here, and maybe I'm going to provide you with more detail than you need, but I want to be as thorough as I think I need to be. I'd like to briefly go through the regulatory history of this landfill again, and some of you have read that in earlier reports, but it bears repeating, I think, in order to put the proposed consent decree in context. In September 12, 2002, DeWitt County Board granted local sighting approval for landfill number three. That's the larger facility in which the chemical waste unit is contained. That was for a municipal solid waste landfill. They did the proper local sighting approval for that. The Illinois EPA eventually issued permit 2005-70 in response to that in 2007, and that's when they started operating the larger landfill, this municipal solid waste landfill. It was not until October 19, 2007, that Clinton Landfill made application with the US EPA in order to get approval to accept TSCA-regulated PCB wastes in that particular facility. That was only after they were unsuccessful in having their hazardous waste landfill in Peoria County expanded. So this was Plan B for them. It was not the intention, when they got the original landfill permit in Clinton, to have this sort of waste there. They did this as an alternative because they were denied permission to do it in Peoria County. Eventually, the, they filed, CLA filed for application with the Illinois EPA for this approval of permit modification number nine, to get the state authorization to accept this PCB federally regulated waste, subject to final approval by the US EPA, and also to get permission to accept this more toxic manufactured gas plant waste. That request was granted in 2010, January 8 of 2010, they issued permit modification number nine. And again, there is some indication that, in fact, the agency was aware that there had been no local sighting approval at that time. So it's a factual dispute there. It's not as represented by some of the earlier remarks. It may very well be that the Illinois EPA was aware of that and simply did not think this was a new pollution control facility. We think they were wrong in that. We think we have strong arguments to that effect. But I think that's as likely what happened as the counter notion that Clinton Landfill somehow fraudulently applied for this. So that's something to keep in mind as far as looking at what all the risks are going ahead with the litigation. In July 31, 2014, well, let me, I've skipped an important step here. We filed our citizens' complaint November 9, 2012. And the essence of that complaint was a procedural defect. We argued that this was being operated unlawfully because Clinton Landfill failed to get this local sighting approval from the DeWitt County Board. We were not saying that no such approvals should ever be granted. We were simply saying, "You missed a step. You need to go back and do that." And that, in the view of our attorneys, was the best we could do essentially at that point. And we were anticipating, possibly participating in such a local sighting hearing if we got to that point. And as many of you are aware, we've gotten preliminary approval from all the members to actually pay $100,000 to $200,000 to do that. Be very expensive process to do that, but we were prepared to do that. In July 31, 2014, the Illinois EPA changed its mind and issued permit modification number 47, where they essentially retracted the permission they had granted in this earlier permit modification number nine. We're very glad they did that, and it was very helpful that, to us, that they did that. I think it gave us additional leverage. I think it's one of the reasons that the landfill has finally come around and are willing to settle with us in this matter. But in any event, they've issued that permit modification 47, and that is now being contested by the landfill. And we don't know the outcome of that as we sit here. It may be that the Pollution Control Board will say the agency overstepped its boundary, and we go back to permit modification number nine. We hope that's not the case. We think we have good arguments that they should not come to that decision, but we don't know. So that's another bit of uncertainty that I don't think was accurately portrayed in some of the earlier remarks to you from some of the local activists. So what are the risks of continuing with the litigation? Well, we could lose, okay? We could lose both lawsuits. The Fourth District Appellate Court may agree with the Pollution Control Board that, as a matter of law, the landfill cannot be in violation of the Act simply because the Illinois EPA erroneously issued them the permission through this permit modification number nine. There is some case law that, if interpreted a certain way, could be construed to support that position. So the outcome before the Fourth District Appellate Court is uncertain, okay? We think we have some pretty good arguments. Our attorneys did a terrific job briefing the issue, but we don't know what the outcome will be. It could go either way. Then we have the, again, the parallel lawsuit filed by Clinton Landfill before the Illinois Pollution Control Board, where they're alleging, "No, we didn't make false or misleading information in our application. We didn't misrepresent that we did not have local sighting review. That was very apparent from the record. The Illinois EPA should not have now changed course and issued permit modification number 47." That outcome is uncertain, okay? That's the considered view of our excellent attorneys. That's my view, from looking at the law in some detail and looking at all the tortured facts in this case. We don't know the outcome of that. So the suggestion that, you know, they don't have any chance in this lawsuit, that suggestion I don't think is accurate, and it's not a risk that we ought to take, in my view. Now, if we win, we win both lawsuits, okay? We were successful in the Fourth District Appellate Court. They agree that the, that can be a violation of the Act for a landfill to go ahead without local sighting approval. It would still have to go back to the Pollution Control Board. It would be remanded to that board, and they would still ultimately have to decide whether, in fact, in this fact situation, there was a requirement for a new local sighting hearing. That issue has not finally been decided by the Pollution Control Board. So that's another bit of uncertainty here. We don't know the outcome of that. We think we've got very strong arguments, and we think we ought to win, but we're realistic and we understand that the facts, there's some serious factual disputes. There's some serious issues about the law, about whether this is, in fact, a new pollution control facility. We think it's, doesn't make common sense that it's not, but I have to tell you, the law is not as clear as it could be. In fact, we were even exploring new legislation to clarify that issue in response to this litigation. So I don't mean to belabor the point, but there's a lot of uncertainty with regard to the law, with regard to the facts, that are being somewhat glossed over, I would respectfully suggest, by the people who are opposing this consent decree. And I, and I think, Frank, I attribute it to just their not understanding the complexity of the law, and I can understand that. I sure have no, no difficulty understanding why they're frustrated and suspicious, given what they've had to deal with in DeWitt County. And that's, that's another thing I'd like to briefly touch on, the culture in DeWitt County, okay? I've been working very closely with some of these good people who've been fighting the good fight for a long time, and again, it pains me to be at odds with them at this particular delicate point in the situation. It really, and I'm sure they're, feel uncomfortable with this too, because we've been closely allied, and we've been going to public meetings and fighting the good fight, as they say. Having said that, and I think they'd be the first to acknowledge us to you, with DeWitt County, they have a culture where they view this landfill as an economic development driver and a revenue source. And they make close to $1 million in host fees every year from this. They don't use any of those dollars to monitor this landfill. They get to use all of that money for all of their general needs, and it's a pretty seductive thing here in a small county like DeWitt County. I think it's regrettable that they have not been more sensitive, I'm talking about the board generally, in the last decade, to the environmental issues, and I think that's unfortunately been obscured to some degree by the money that's been involved. And I want to be clear, there's nothing unlawful about that. This host agreement arrangement is perfectly lawful. Many of us think that that is one of the many flaws in the way we regulate landfills. We think that's a goofy idea and can lead to this sort of result, but that's the law. And that's the history in DeWitt County. They're addicted to this revenue source. They'll, they'll tell you that. Terry will tell you that. Sherry will tell you that. So the notion that, you know, it's not a risk to go back to this board, even for application of a hazardous waste landfill, I don't understand why they're not more concerned about that. I'm concerned about that, and I don't think they're reliable as far as denying this, even if we have good consultants testifying. The landfill, they're going to come in with their consultants. We can pretty much expect that. They were prepared to get this US EPA permit when we finally got involved. They were on the brink of getting that permit, and this, you need to understand, was in the context of already some serious factual disputes about whether this was a good idea or not. KPRG, the consultant working for the Mohammed Valley Water Authority, had already weighed in with a very detailed critique of Clinton Landfill's consultant's report, saying, "Gee, they're wrong about X, Y, and Z. We don't think this is safe. We don't think this is a good idea." While the US EPA was already, still prepared to approve the permit, they had a draft permit out for public comment, when we finally found out about this and started to get involved. So, one of the things to understand is, we got in, we did get involved in this pretty late. I wish we'd known about this earlier. I wish, you know, counties all over the aquifer were required to get notice about this situation. That's a piece of legislation we should look to. I think this whole setup is flawed. The regulatory scheme, in the view of many of us, has some serious problems. I think that needs to be looked at with new legislation. We want to, at some date, very soon in the future, get all of our coalition members to support legislation to absolutely prohibit any landfill or any expansion of any existing landfill anywhere over the Mohammed Aquifer. We don't think we can trust the regulatory process. I agree with a lot of the comments that are made, but it is what it is, and it would be a very big waste of resources, in my view, to try to accomplish these sorts of objectives with our lawsuit, because we can't get there with our lawsuit. And that's something that we cannot lose sight of. So I'm in agreement with a lot of the suggestions from some of the earlier speakers that, you know, our current regulatory scheme does not adequately protect the public. That's my own feeling. Exhibit A would be, they can put coal ash in there. You heard a lot about that. There wasn't much comment about that, because I think there was finally realization that, "Well, you can put that in a solid waste municipal landfill." Do I think that's good public policy? No, I don't. But you need to understand the bigger picture. The US EPA just recently declined the invitation from a number of environmental groups to reclassify coal ash waste as hazardous waste. Now, I've looked at some of the literature, and boy, I'm convinced it ought to be hazardous waste, but the US EPA doesn't agree, and it's still treated, and has been treated in Illinois for many years now, as non-hazardous special waste, and by virtue of that categorization, it can go into a solid waste municipal landfill. I don't think that's good public policy. I think that's something we ought to explore changing, but our lawsuit has no ability to do that. None. If we're successful at every turn, that will not change that fact. So the notion that we would not approve this consent decree out of concern that coal ash is going to go in there, just, is not logical. And again, I give the people who are raising that concern the benefit of the doubt. I think they don't fully appreciate the current legal landscape we're dealing with. I'm not suggesting, you know, that they're suggesting you reject this, knowing that it's not a sound reason to do it. I think it's just a misunderstanding of the law. But it's important for our members to understand that, so that we don't waste resources trying to accomplish something we can't with this lawsuit, and I can't emphasize that enough. So, I'd like to very briefly address the notion of this TSCA PCB permit application. The suggestion was that there's no conceivable way that that would ever be approved. I disagree with that, too. I think there's a good chance it would not be approved, but that's another instance where I'm concerned there's going to be a battle of the experts, so to speak, about whether, in fact, PCBs can be put, whether the geology is such that they'll meet the technical requirements for a sole-source aquifer. We got the sole-source aquifer designation, and that was a huge victory. But even with that... But even with that, my reading of the evidence that was presented earlier with the US EPA, it suggests that they will be prepared to offer an expert to say, well, it still even meets those more stricter requirements. And, and I have to say, unless you study this law pretty closely, and unless you have very, very experienced lawyers looking at it, it's difficult to weigh through all this information and to understand all these nuances. So I'm not, I want to be clear, I'm not being critical of the motivations. I, I know these people genuinely feel what they've said, but I think they just don't quite understand all the technical nuances of the law, and, and I have a high degree of confidence in our attorneys, that this is a pretty good outcome, that this is about as much as we could hope for, even if we continue with the litigation. And so it's my hope that this consent decree will be approved, and then we can then devote our attention and energies and money to efforts that might be able to accomplish some of the things that have been discussed by some of the opponents to this decree, changing the legislation, changing the law, so that we can provide more effective protection to the Illinois, or to the Mohammed Aquifer. We're all on the same page there. We all know what a precious resource this is. The very specific issue that you need to decide is whether this is a good outcome for our current litigation with the landfill. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Charlie?
I've got three questions, one with multiple parts. We'll start with two of the easy ones first. What I don't understand is, the, you said that the Clinton landfill, is it Clint, CLI or CLA? I don't know.
CLI.
CLI.
Yes.
Is appealing to the Pollution Control Board, Permit Modification Forty-seven, is that what it was?
Yes. Well, there's been a, to be technically correct, there's been a series of permit modifications, all that have to be reviewed. I won't get into the gory. It's forty-seven started the ball.
Okay. So why would they pursue that appeal with, with the Pollution Control Board if they're party to this, this consent decree?
Well, they won't.
They won't?
That will resolve that.
That will resolve that.
That will resolve that. And I'm sorry if I, if I confuse the issue.
Yeah, okay. That wasn't clear.
Yeah. Let me clarify, this consent decree settles that issue as well.
Okay. So if, so the factual dispute then dies also then?
Yes.
Okay. So that, I guess if it were to go, litigation were to continue, wouldn't we expect to go to the Supreme Court eventually?
We could, and that's something to ponder. I mean, even if we're successful in the, whoever wins in the Fourth District appellate court, I think the losing party is going to ask for a writ of cert, and we could end up with the, to the Illinois Supreme Court.
My, my third question is actually the real important one here, and I think is the most important here. You talk about thirty years of monitoring while the landfill is in existence, and thirty years plus after it's closed, so you get sixty-year window here?
Yes.
Okay. So sixty-year window versus in perpetuity here, the aquifer is not going anywhere, we're going to be here, you know, some of us are going, or our children are going to be here more than sixty years.
Right.
What's the half-life of the materials in the MGP?
Well, I think the, the good news is that the half-life of the MGP is a lot less than PCBs. And just to review, the big concern with PCBs all along is that they are remarkably persistent.
Yeah, they don't go away.
They don't go away, and, and just to remind everybody, none of those are in there that are regulated by the federal government, and this decree would prevent any of them from ever going in there.
Do you know what the half-life is of the list of chemicals?
I do not, as I sit here, no.
Okay. That's, that to me is a very important point that we should understand, is what the half-life is. Because what concerns me is what kind of monitoring and remediation abilities are after sixty years? Who's going to be around to take the financial responsibility of remediation if something does go wrong?
Well, that's, that's an interesting, understandable question, and let me, let me respectfully suggest, that's one of those things that we ought to try to address in legislation, because that's the current law, and it's our view that this landfill's not going to unilaterally agree to something that no other landfill in the United States has to do. I, I'm not disagreeing with you. It's a matter, I believe, of pursuing legislative change to look at that, and we could take a closer look at that, that very issue that you raised.
The one thing, to me, that's missing from the agreement, now that I've read it and understand that point, is that there is no long-term care fund established by this consent decree, and that, to me, is a missing piece.
Well, there is a, there's a long-ter, long-term care fund created by the existing law, and I can't speak to all the details of that. There is, under law, a fund provided for that purpose, and, and I can't speak to all the intricacies of it. The consent decree does not address that specifically in recognition of the fact that there is already existing law that addresses that. And again, I'm not saying that this isn't something worth a closer look, but the thing you need to understand is, we cannot get that relief from our lawsuit, and I hope you can understand that. In other words, a court is not going to order the landfill, if we're, if we're successful at every turn, we get all the relief we're seeking in our lawsuit, there's no court that's going to order them to do things that they're not required to do more generally, including post-closure care, if, if I'm understood there. We're not going to, well, I-
You can always ask. You know, you can always ask to have it included in a consent decree.
Well, I, I think that, I mean, I think that's, that's a matter of, you know, understanding the reality of the legal environment we're in, and, and again, more fully appreciating the limitations of what we can accomplish with our lawsuit, so.
Well, I think, I think that leaves two questions that we need to have answered before we take a vote, which is, what is the half-life of the MGP materials? And what is the, what, what currently exists in terms of a long-term fund post the sixty years of the life of the landfill and its, and its post-closure care? So, I mean, those are two questions that can be answered.
Bill?
Yeah, I had a question about the language in, on page, well, I don't know if it's the same page numbers we do. It's part B. I have page ten, State of Stipulations, Paragraph Two. Talking about what they can put in the, in the chemical waste, the former chemical waste unit. Not used for disposal of MGP source material or TSA PCBs after the date of this order. And hereafter, CWU only accepts municipal solid waste, non-hazardous special waste, certified non-special waste, and such other waste that CLI is permitted to accept at the MSWU. Why, if, if all they can accept is what's permitted at the MSWU, why include all the others? What is, non-hazardous special waste is the fly ash?
Well, that's just an example of waste that they can accept at that facility, and I, I don't know.
Well, then, I would read it, I mean, if it was an example, I would think it would say, and other such wastes, not such other wastes. It sounds like there's several different things there, so I guess I'd want clarification what non-hazardous special waste and certified non-special wastes are.
And can you, again, remind me what, exactly what paragraph you're looking at?
It's Letter B, Paragraph Two.
Right.
I mean, I, you said earlier that the non-hazardous special waste included fly ash. I don't know if there's other non-hazardous special wastes, so I guess I'd want some clarification to make sure that-
Well, that, one of the, one of the reasons that it's worded that way is, there's now a new state law that says that, that, that for the first time, frankly, under state law, characterizes MGP source material as hazardous waste, so. And one of the ironic things here is that, before we got that new law, the Illinois EPA was taking it upon themselves not to allow that waste to go into a municipal solid waste landfill unless it was designed to hazardous waste landfill standards, which was the case in this facility. So I think that's the way that's worded, reason that's worded that way. PCB wastes are kind of a, an odd duck, so to speak. They're not, it's clearly addressed as perhaps they could be in state law, so I think that's the reason that those are called out specially as well.
Yeah. I guess, just to reiterate, I'd, I'd still wonder why you couldn't just say, and hereafter, the CWU only accepts municipal solid waste that CLI is permitted to accept at the MSWU at the facility? Because that's what, that's what our understanding is, right?
You know, to be honest, maybe just a matter of emphasis, I, I don't think it, I, I don't believe it in any way affects our abilities or to, or our objectives, the way it's worded, is my view.
Okay. And then for the monitoring wells, I guess those are already drilled. Are they, do they go into the aquifer, or they in the shallower?
I know, I, no, I don't believe that, I, they go into a-
The shallower groundwater?
Yeah, shallower groundwater. Yeah, so the-
Do you know if there's been any-
The, the objective being to catch it before it gets down to the aquifer.
Do you know if there's been any drilling down into the aquifer in that area that would perhaps compromise?
Yeah, in the facility? Not, not in the facility, I don't believe, and I can't speak to whether there are even local wells going into the aquifer that, if they are, if there are, I'm, I'm thinking it's probably private wells, but I can't answer that question. And that's something to, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Diane, and then Eric.
Just a couple of things to make sure I understand, and then I have a question. One is, I understand this consent decree runs with the land, so if the landfill is sold, the, every, all the terms stay in place?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. And then, as I read it, the chemical waste unit was about twenty-two acres, and that's where the MGP, about twenty-seven thousand cubic yards of MGP is buried there, but the capacity of that is over two and a half million cubic yards.
Yes, yes.
So it's like one percent of that CWU is used, and there's ninety-nine percent of that sitting there empty. Is that only allowed in the future, under this decree, to accept regular municipal solid waste?
Yes.
Okay. So that won't be filled up with any other type of-
No, they can only, they can only put in the, the same waste they can put in the rest of landfill number three.
Could be coal ash, though, because that's-
It could be coal ash.
Under current legal landscape, that's what could go there.
Yes.
Unless we change the law.
And, and just, you know, just to emphasize an earlier point, my understanding is, coal ash is being deposited in many landfills over the state already, and in any event, it is treated as a non-hazardous special waste that could go into this, even into landfill number three outside of this facility.
Okay. And then one more is related to the test wells. There was a sentence in there that said that the EPA could request split samples. Would that be the samples taken from the test wells to be sent off for analysis? Half of those, or a part of those could also be sent to an independent facility? Would the public have access to those results?
Yes. In fact, all the results do go back to the Illinois EPA, and all of those results would be subject to disclosure through a Freedom of Information request.
That's the only way we could get that information?
At this time, yes. And, and that's another thing that I think we want to explore with legislation, perhaps creating a little easier path to do that, but you could get that information with a Freedom of Information request, and I think, you know, we want to explore more regional control over the aquifer, and we, these are all things I think we need to explore with legislation, and that we cannot accomplish with a successful lawsuit, in, in our view.
And then one other thing, just so I understand, we, the Attorney General is reserving the option to require exhumation of the MGP in the future if, for some reason, there's a problem detected, or we start to see-
Yes, yes. We have a, it's, and I'll direct your attention to, let me get the right page here. I believe it's under G, release from liability, and there's a provision at the State and Local Government Reserve, and the consent orders without prejudice to the rights of the state of Illinois and the local governmental plaintiffs against CLI, with respect to all matters not expressly addressed in herein, including, and then they have criminal liability, liability for future violations, liability for natural resources damages arising out of the alleged violations, and CLI's failure to satisfy the requirements of this order. Now, modifying that, earlier on, we, as individual members of the coalition, do not have the right to seek that remedy. We can, we can file a complaint alleging that there's been a violation, we would need to rely on the Illinois Attorney General and the Illinois EPA to seek that relief. And our attorneys viewed that as a reasonable compromise from the sheer fact that, in their experience, no court would actually order that kind of remedy without the active involvement of the Attorney General and the Illinois EPA. So just to clarify, we, we, as individual members, wouldn't have the right to seek that particular remedy. We could bring the violation to the attention of a court, and, and the Illinois Attorney General would then presumably join us in that lawsuit, along with the Illinois EPA, and they reserve the right to seek that relief if they think it's, deem it otherwise appropriate in order to address the, the pollution.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric?
So I'm going to preface the question with a comment, with a comment, a framed comment. So I noticed that the members of the Pollution Control Board are appointed by the governor, and that Governor Rauner's will probably make one appointment a year as people's terms expire, and his first appointment is an individual who outspokenly believes in market-based, as opposed to regulatory, solutions to environmental problems, which we can probably figure in about three years will be a majority view on the Pollution Control Board, possibly. So in the context of that comment, I want to be sure that I understand, if the consent decree is not approved, the Pollution Control Board may be involved in fielding appeals on this over the next two to three years. Is that correct?
That's correct. And they're, and they're the same folks that dismissed our complaint as not having any merit, so, I mean, that, you just have to, that's the reality, and more reason, in our view, to go along with, to approve this consent decree.
Dennis?
And so, in this discussion, which is really pretty deep and complex, it's, I've heard the comment quite a few times that, you know, this is not a very perfect structure under which we're operating, that there are flaws that have occurred, and that certain things need to be remedied by legislation. And I'm thinking about how difficult it is to get things done by legislation in a state, and how useful is it to even think that we have the ability to make that, to create legislation that's going to be adopted, actually, by the entire Illinois Assembly, House, and Senate? What great efforts does it take to not just get the Mohammed Aquifer cited as a sole source? I mean, apparently, that wasn't a question that too many people stumbled upon, but what's, you know, I guess I'm concerned about whatever resistances people may have as individual assemblymen, and, you know, in the State House, to adopt what would be, to them, kind of nitpicking issues over, you know, whether something is A or B. If this is going to be the source of our future remedies for monitoring and controlling deposits in the, the landfill in the future, what's the chance of anything that we want to have done actually become a law? I guess that's a speculative question.
Well, let me, let me, let me assure you that I'm not naive about how hard it is to get legislation passed. We, I, I weighed in on the legislative process for the first time several years ago regarding the Mohammed Aquifer, and it's quite a chaotic situation. We have some pretty powerful interests allied against us, no question about it. I, I'm more encouraged now, because we got the sole source aquifer designation. I think that, in my view, was a game changer. We no longer have to convince various members of the General Assembly that this is a special aquifer. We don't even have to name it by name. We now have the benefit of seeking legislation to protect, quote-unquote, "a sole source aquifer," which gets around the special legislation constitutional problem, and I won't get into the gory detail of that. So we're in a much better position, in my view- So, we're in a much better position, in my view, to make a concerted effort to persuade the General Assembly that we need these additional protections. It's going to be hard, you know, and we have a governor who thinks, you know, who, as has been suggested, that the market works great, and, you know, and that government is meddling and that kind of thing. We're going to have to change his mind about that, I think, and we have to, and if we're unable to do that with him, we need to work on the General Assembly. I'm not, I make no bones that that's going to be easy, and it's an example of what we're up against. But the fact remains that we really can't accomplish these objectives with our lawsuit, and that's the thing that we have to keep in mind. Do we want to spend money trying to obtain an objective that's really not at all likely to happen? I'd say the answer is no to that. That doesn't change the fact that we're up, you know, that this is a challenge to get these laws passed, but I think our chances are better now. That's my view.
Is the public's goose kind of cooked on this one, but at least we're going to have a settlement that won't damage the situation further than we have now?
I think that's our view, and frankly, to the extent we continue litigating this, it just takes our attention away from these other efforts that might bear fruit. I mean, I don't know how else to put it. So, aside from the fact that, in our view, we're not, it's extremely unlikely we're going to do better than this, the other concern is that we're going to continue to spend money on our attorneys. We're going to continue to spend time monitoring that. I'm going to continue to come to all 14 members and talk about it, and in the meantime, we're not going to have the time and energy to focus on these other efforts that are, that at least have some possibility of achieving some of these objectives.
Here in the city, there was a landfill that received what they call brownfield remediation successfully, and would the aquifer, the contamination waste under the aquifer qualify for federal funds, for cleaning?
Boy, I don't know the answer to that. That's an interesting question. I, you know, again, I think our ultimate goal, in the view of myself and many others, is that we need to vigorously pursue legislation so there's no new landfills and no expansion of existing landfills over the aquifer. And that's, you know, I think we've got a pretty good argument to make there, and it's going to, it's going to be a difficult thing to try to do. We can look at other, I think we need to look at other legislation to beef up the regulator oversight of these facilities. This kind of brings into relief, in my view, that we've privatized this far too far greater an extent. We're relying too much on the private operators, in the view of many of us, but again, that's something that I think needs to be addressed with legislation, and that's where I think we ought to, you know, spend our energy and time from this point forward. That would be my recommendation.
All righty then, Aaron.
So thanks, Joe, for being in such a tough seat. Appreciate you, your report, but I also wanted to thank Watch and all the people who came to share their concerns because I believe far too often the individuals who have been working on this for years are marginalized when it gets to these negotiations, so I'm certainly disheartened to hear that Watch and some of these other individuals were not a part of the negotiations. Why weren't they invited to the table to be a part of the negotiations?
Well, I just don't think that hap, that's not the real world of negotiating a settlement between parties. I appreciate the sentiment, and I understand that notion. I don't think we would have been able to negotiate the case in that kind of a setting. And again, that, I'm not, I'm just talking about the way that these things work generally. This is not to disparage in any way, shape, or form the tremendous efforts that Watch have made, and the fact that they brought this to our attention and started this, but that's, that's something that I think traditionally involves the quote-unquote attorneys who are involved. I mean, that's just the way negotiations work. That's the expectations of the private party, and I don't think we could have overcome that general expectation that they would have. In an ideal world, we would have done that, but I don't think that's the way things work, unfortunately, and to some degree, you know, and I don't think this is unique to our situation, settlement negotiations are typically the attorneys talking to the attorneys. I mean, and so, I appreciate the sentiment, and I just don't think there was anything unusual in the way this was approached.
Well, I don't know, Joe. I think sometimes the box thinking that we've been caught up into for decades is part of the problem, so I don't think there's anything wrong with challenging a status quo and a position that just currently exists because it just exists that way.
Yeah.
And certainly making sure that the individuals who live in these areas, who are going to be affected by these decisions, and who have been working on them, should at least have a very clear, and maybe you represented this, and the attorneys you're talking about represented this, had very clear communications where if there was some particular negotiations going on, that you could pick up the phone and say, hey, listen, this is the proposal. How do we feel about this? That type of thing. Was there any of that type of thing going on?
Yeah, to some degree there was, and it's a very delicate thing. I can't, these negotiations are confidential. There was a number of conversations we had about the settlement that was reached between the Witt County Board and the landfill, and that started the concern among the activists, because I think there was a reasonable expectation that our settlement might shape up in a similar fashion, and it did in some key respects. But I'm not at liberty, and the other attorneys are not at liberty, to discuss negotiations with private individuals such as the people in Watch. I mean, that would have been out of bounds and improper for me or the, our attorneys to do. And, you know, the drafts that were circulated even had a boilerplate on there to that effect. And is that, you know, perhaps is that not the way it should be done? I don't know. That's an interesting discussion, but I guess the thing I want to emphasize is that's pretty typical about how things are handled, and I want to emphasize that we, this is not going to be approved by every member for a month, so there's, and the consent decree is out there, and so it's not like, I want to, I want to make another key point. This bears absolutely no resemblance to what happened in DeWitt County earlier. There's been suggestion that, and I won't go into the details there, but they had a host agreement amendment that wasn't even on their agenda, and that even most of the board members hadn't seen before they signed off on it. So, when you hear about, you know, the lack of public exposure and related to the experiences in DeWitt County, boy, that was a different situation, and I, and I understand that, you know, I understand some of the idea, well, gee, let's take 60 days to look at this. I just don't think that's practical.
I still have a few other things, so, you know, I'm not lost on the fact, I kind of understand the idea or what was put forth by Dennis, that it feels like the public's goose is cooked on this situation. So in some respects, I understand the writing that's on the wall at this particular point, okay? So I'm trying to make larger points about participation and people who are involved or not involved in a situation like this.
Yes.
And I have to say that what bothers me about that is just even in some of your statements, you say the activists feel this way, but the very skilled attorneys feel this particular way. So even in your comments, I hear that there's a dismissal, to some degree, of the people who are, who have been working their butts off for a long time on this, and not to say that you guys haven't, right? But the terminology that's being used is that this particular group is not knowledgeable enough to be a part of these particular negotiations or discussions and stuff like that. They're out there, they've done their part, now let the big people do it. That's how people feel, and I just want to make, I just want to make note of that, right? Okay, even in your comments, I heard that. So, and you're there negotiating on behalf of the people who are going to be affected by this decision. So one of my questions I had was, is it, if it were discovered, I think you touched on this, but if it were discovered that the toxins were polluting the water, would the remediation process have a window of 60 years? So if, for instance, within 60 years it was discovered that there was some pollution, and it was seeping into the water, would, who would be responsible for cleaning that up, right? And if it was after the 60-year window, who would be responsible, if anybody, for cleaning it up?
After the post-closure period, my understanding is that the private company no longer has responsibility, and that is something, again, that we cannot change with our lawsuit. There's some people who think that's not long enough. It used to be shorter. It used to be like 15 years. The law was revised to make it 30 years. Perhaps there's a good argument to make it much longer, but I guess the point that bears emphasis, again, is we're not going to get there with our lawsuit. No judge is going to order that, them to do something that the law doesn't require them to do in that regard. And you're kind of preaching to the choir, to the extent that, gee, maybe that's not long enough. I think that might be another example of where a regulatory scheme doesn't hold the actual operator accountable long enough. I think that's a reasonable conversation to have.
And I do think that's one of the more significant points that have been made tonight that has really given me pause, is that if the law, although it was done illegally, immorally, all those different things, if the case law, and if we strongly feel that there's going to be, there isn't going to be any remediation, that they're not going to make them remove it.
Yeah.
That would make me pause, but I know you understand this, but has there been any successful, to your knowledge, remediation of toxins like this? Can we remove these toxins from this landfill safely without it percolating into the aquifer and actually polluting the aquifer? Are there any successful examples of that taking place?
My understanding is that there have maybe been isolated instances where they've successfully been able to pump out the contaminated water. One of the concerns we have is that, I think that the evidence suggests it would be much, much more difficult than it would be with a surface body of water, and that's why we think we should not even be taking these chances, and that's why we think there should not be any landfills over an aquifer as precious as the Mohammed Aquifer. We think, we think, you know, there's been a, an unwarranted confidence put in that, well, we can fix this if it doesn't work out, and I think that's been overstated, and there's a limit to what you can do, and again, one of the reasons we think we still have a lot of, a lot of work to do, no doubt about it.
So at the end of the day, we have 27,000 tons of toxins. What do they look like? I keep hearing this thing, what is this stuff that we're talking about?
Well, that's, yeah, I can't speak to that. It's, you know, it's mixed in the soil. The manufactured gas plant source material means stuff that was unlawfully, perhaps even lawfully disposed, predating, you know, any kind of rational environmental regulation, but just kind of dumped in the soil, so now it's intermingled with the soil, and so you probably can't see it, so to speak. It probably looks like dirt, but it's got, it's got some pretty nasty stuff in it, benzene and other things that are, that are, you know, clearly been shown to be harmful to human health, no question about that, but I'm not the expert on...
Well, I was just trying to get an idea, for me, the visual, to try to understand what we're dealing with, and I think at the end of the day, none of us want chemicals over the aquifer anywhere in any county. So there was one thing about the consent decree that you did say about DeWitt County, which I found to be interesting, found to be interesting. You said it only restricted, or did it only restrict dumping in DeWitt County, or does it restrict...
Yes. It doesn't go, we weren't able to, we weren't able to get them to commit to nowhere over the aquifer. We have absolutely no indication they have any plans to do that. It was just a matter of how far they were willing to unilaterally restrict themselves unlike any other landfill. They were willing to commit to not doing it anywhere in DeWitt County over the Mohammed Aquifer, but not over the aquifer more generally.
Well, I don't know if this is negotiating publicly, but I can't understand why an entity would even want to put toxins over an aquifer. I don't know if they knew that from the beginning, but then to say that now they're only going to commit to doing it over, and restricting over DeWitt County, why wouldn't they just, hey, no problem, I won't do it anywhere where the aquifer is? That's a reasonable negotiation.
I mean, the short answer is they've persuaded themselves that they can do it safely. I don't know how else to put it. We think that is an imprudent, irresponsible judgment on their part, but they're not alone in that regard. The whole regulatory scheme, under current state law, presumes that you can safely put this stuff over an aquifer as long as you engineer it effectively enough, and that's what we're dealing with. And, you know, the more we look at this, the more we think that's a bad bet, and that the law ought to change. And I should note that in Ohio, New York, and the state of Washington, they do a more sensible approach. They do, in fact, ban landfills over quote-unquote "sole source aquifers". I think we ought to do it as well, and I think that's where we need to direct our attention from this point forward. It just seems like a crazy risk to take, and we can't rely, I mean, these, these landfills, they're operating like profit-making businesses that, you know, and they're, they're doing what they can do under the regulations, and so I think it behooves us to try to change those regulations to more effectively protect the public.
Well, I think one of my last points would be that, just driving home the issue of DeWitt County as it relates to, how many other, is it 13 other counties? How many other counties are we talking about?
I think there's 14 there, technically, have part of the county located over the aquifer, yes.
So, I guess to some degree, I would say that it's a deal breaker from a negotiation standpoint, that if you're not willing to put this, make this decree cover the entire reach and the entire, I don't know what I want to say, but the entire aquifer, right?
Yeah.
I don't think that you're bargaining in good faith then. If you're really telling me if this other entity is saying that, hey, we want to make sure that we're going to walk away from this, everybody's intact, we'll leave what's, if we can leave what's there there, and we don't want, we don't have any further plans, then put it in writing that you don't have any further plans, and I think that we should be able to demand at least that from this process. I think it's a reasonable...
Well, I guess, again, I have no difficulty understanding why that's an optimal outcome, no doubt about it, but I think it bears repeating, they don't even have to commit to not doing it anywhere else in DeWitt County in our lawsuit. All they have to do is go back to the DeWitt County Board and get local siting approval, and even if that's denied, that would not prevent them from moving to another location over the aquifer and opening up a landfill. And it behooves us, now that we know about this, okay, aside from legislation, we have to figure out strategies to be hyper vigilant about this, and there are ways of knowing about plans of putting another landfill over the aquifer, and this won't be repeated, is my hope.
But I just don't understand what we're gaining from this, though. I don't get it. If we already have toxins above the aquifer that could at some point seep into it, right? They can still go to other counties and offer them millions of dollars to put a site there. What are we gaining from the consent decree?
First, it's important to understand that it's not real easy to get permission to put a landfill somewhere else. So whoever's going to do that, it's a somewhat arduous process, so it's not a matter of just buying another lot and opening up shop. It's a pretty elaborate series of review that they have to go through. Having said that, what we do gain is they agree not to put any more waste in this facility, and without that, that outcome is not assured. It's not, and number one, they can come back, and without this consent decree, they could seek local siting approval. I think it would have to be as a hazardous waste landfill. I don't know that's for sure, though. This is a new landscape with this new law. They may have some argument that they're grandfathered in in some fashion. That might be something we'd have to litigate again, but there's no question that they could make application for a hazardous waste landfill, and frankly, I don't think the DeWitt County Board can be counted on to deny that. I just have no faith in the DeWitt County Board, given the way they view this landfill as a revenue source. I'd like to think they would deny it, but that's one thing we're avoiding, and that's not a small thing. And that's not a small thing. And we're also gaining their commitment not to move it right next to the cell. They wouldn't be able to do that. Without this consent decree, they could close up shop in landfill number three and make application for landfill number four, right next door. And they own the land right next door. So that is a very, very realistic scenario that we avoid with this consent decree. So I think we gained significant concessions with this consent decree. I don't agree that we're not gaining anything. And again, are, you know, would these other results be great? Well, sure, yeah. I think we all agree on that. But I, I don't think there's any real, there's, there's no way we can accomplish that with our lawsuit. That's clear, so.
Mayor?
Yeah, I want to just comment on the process. When we first asked Joe Hooker to come and talk about this, we thought we were going to have a closed session. And Joe said he wanted to have an open session. I mean, normally lawsuits are done in a closed session and you come out and it becomes public. But I think everybody played a role in this. And if, if Watch and the people in Dewitt County hadn't alerted us to this, we never would have had the consortium and we wouldn't have gotten this far. But there's getting the public interested. Everybody should be aware that there's such a shortage of good water on this planet that it's really dumb to threaten an aquifer. But people didn't realize that until Watch and the other organizations got started on this. And then we have the legal landscape that we have to go through. And of course, the legal landscape can be changed by the legislature. And so being a citizen of the United States, you can't just assume that a regulatory body is going to do things. I remember when the mayors went to talk to the governor and the EPA. I said, it's the Environmental Protection Agency. If we're not going to protect water, what are we going to protect? So it took a whole series of public meetings and talking with legislators. And, and this is just one step. And I think it's a reasonable step. And as you have said, we have to go on from here. We have to change the legal landscape so that we have better laws in Illinois. And if Washington State and these other states can say, no landfill over an aquifer, I don't see why Illinois can't. So I thank you for all the work that you've done. And I think that we do have an open process and we are not rushing this through. We are having every single signer to this consortium have their own hearings on it. So the public has plenty of chance to ask questions and to make suggestions.
Eric, I'm sorry, Charlie.
The two old guys on this end.
Yeah, right, the bald guys.
Those two super smart guys on the other end.
We have to stick together.
The, the, you keep talking about a role for the consortium and the mayor has echoed that. Is there a formal plan for keeping the consortium going to lobby for these changes and so on?
I, I think there, well, we don't have an intergovernmental agreement that addresses that, but it's certainly our intent to continue with the coalition and to, the next thing would be to actually make specific suggestions about legislation that we could get each member to pass a resolution supporting. So we're, we're certainly actively talking about doing that. We don't, we don't, the intergovernmental agreement currently is limited to our sharing the costs of litigation. So we, that has to be revised in some fashion. The good news is, in my view, it'll be a lot less expensive exploring these other things than litigation. I mean, that's the, that's an unfortunate thing about litigation. It's pretty darn expensive. Legislation, on the other hand, I think we can, we've already gone through a number of iterations there. I've drafted a number of things that I've suggested to some of our local legislatures, legislators to sponsor. And so that, that I view as the next thing to try to enlist the support.
Let me throw something out there then, as you think about that then, given that it's not going to be involved in litigation, then there's a, a role for the public groups like Watch at the table in such a group, in such a coalition. And I would encourage that.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks for your patience. I'm sure you're looking forward to doing this 12 more times. I do have a couple of questions. I want to make sure that I understand kind of the best-case, worst-case scenarios. So from what I understand, the worst case might be, I mean, if, if we don't, if we didn't approve this, if, or if any one of the 14 members of the coalition didn't approve this, it wouldn't be approved, right?
Well, that's another interesting question. We're hoping that doesn't happen, but we would have to regroup and consult with our attorneys and see where to go forward. If one member didn't approve, I, I, just as an example, perhaps the other members would have to, would want to explore settling it themselves and not wanting to go ahead with the litigation. And that, it, that'll get a little complicated if that happens and.
Okay, I guess that's a separate path then.
Yeah, yeah.
So say it doesn't get approved, the worst-case scenario might be that they would get a hazardous, hazardous waste land site dumped there.
Well, one thing is clear, they will, will absolutely have the right to make application for a hazardous waste landfill in order to resume using the chemical waste unit for the more toxic manufactured gas plant and to frankly bring back into play the PCB application. I mean, they, they have not, as we sit here, the consent decree hasn't been approved. They have not agreed to never request or resume or renew that application, which they could do at any time. The suggestion is there's no way they could meet the technical requirements. Again, I think there would be a factual dispute there. I think we would be able to bring experts to, to bear that say they don't meet them, but I, I think we're going to be countered with experts saying just the opposite. So that's, that's certainly one of the, the adverse consequences of not settling possibilities.
Right. And, and if we didn't settle, from my understanding, the best case might be that Terry and Sheri are successful with their colleagues and they're, it would convince them along with our $200,000 lawyers to not cite the local, not make the local siting. And so then they wouldn't have the permission to do the local siting for the chemical waste unit. And at that point, would they be automatically obligated to remove the existing MGP's that are in there? Or would we have to show that it also, was there intent to defraud or something in order for them to have to be forced to remove the MGP's?
I think at the very least, we'd have to show a pretty serious intent to defraud the regulator in order to have any chance at that remedy. And I think that's problematic. I think the record is a lot less clear than is suggested by what the Illinois EPA recently did, which, that's, that's my view. I, it seems to me there's paper floating around that suggests they knew very well that there had not been local siting approval. And so if that's the facts as established by whatever, whoever the fact finder is, makes it really unlikely that the court's going to order them to remove that stuff, particularly in the absence of any evidence that it's currently causing pollution. And, you know, so that's our considered view that that's a very unlikely outcome. And that's the one main concession we're making to, to let them leave that there.
Okay. And then finally, kind of related to what Aaron was asking, the, the Hill, the Hill Street cleanup that was done by AMR, and that was basically MGP remediation. So it was that kind of material that is probably there. Maybe it is that material that's there now, who knows?
I, I don't, I don't know if any of that ended up in Clinton or not, as I sit here.
Okay.
Okay. Well, there's your answer.
So, did you have any idea what, how many thousands of tons were, were removed from the Hill Street area? I'm trying to wrap my head around what, 27,000?
Yeah, good question. I don't, I don't know if anyone here would remember that. I was involved in some of the city review that earlier, but I don't remember the quantity that was in question there. A fair amount, but yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that.
That's fine, thank you.
So any further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
So our next public input card is from John Marlin.
I'm John Marlin. I live at 2203 Boudreaux Circle, Urbana. And by way of disclosure, my wife is sitting over there. In five minutes, I don't know what I can do for you, but I've been a conservation activist most of my life. I was an organizer. I put together massive coalitions across much of the country back in the 70s. I dealt with any number of issues at the state and federal level. And Governor Thompson appointed me to the Pollution Control Board in 1983. There I was a state officer with quasi-judicial and quasi-legislative powers. And I dealt a lot with landfills. And I will say that, Dan could probably verify this, that I lost more sleep over landfill cases as a board member having to vote than any other cases. Not only were they complex, but they had a lot of serious implications for the winners and the losers. And after the PCB, I was basically employed in state government. I left the PCB in 1993, so I'm somewhat, something like 20 years out of date on some of the issues. But I do remember how we got the landfill siting process. Now, the current issue is politically and bureaucratically complex. You have major players who represent counties, the state, the federal government, and the various citizen interests and the cities. And the county in these particular cases has almost as much power as the state. We have a wonderful coalition represented here on both sides of the issue tonight. A coalition that's taken what any reasonable person three years ago would have considered a totally lost cause and brought it right to the cusp of a substantial victory. In many ways, this is reminiscent of the dam fights of the 70s around here, where dams on the Embra, Middle Fork, and Sangamon rivers, and many on the Mississippi and Illinois, were stopped after they were politically well underway because a substantial coalition of citizens got together, as did the people behind me here, and brought it to the attention of other politicians and authorities that something had to change. Now, I think we can all agree the procedural history of this particular landfill case is abysmal. How it got through all the hoops it did is totally beyond me, but somehow bureaucratically it made it. And originally, the issue seemed to be about the hearing, what we, we used to call Pollution Control Board, the SB 172 Local Landfill Hearing. But what most people don't know is those hearings are very dangerous because whatever the county board decides is almost impossible for the Pollution Control Board or a court to overturn because of the way the law is written. And there's a history behind that. I'll go into later if you want. The issue is originally centered around putting PCBs in the landfill and then MGP and of course, the issue of the hearing. So common sense at the moment is winning, at least on the PCB and the majority of the MGP issues. The coal issue is a legislative matter. As far as I'm concerned, as somebody who's been through these things in other arenas, it's a side issue. We can't do anything about that. When I first went to Pollution Control Board, having left a position as an environmental organizer and conservation activist, basically a lobbyist for conservation issues, my friends were upset because of some of my early Pollution Control Board votes.
You have one minute, Mr. Marlin.
Really? So I basically said, you have to take the law the way it's written, not the way you would have written it. 55 seconds. Okay.
Motion to extend.
I'll second that motion.
I didn't hear what you said.
Just keep talking.
Okay. Okay, much of the current victory is the result of getting the politicians from the city level, county board level, right up to the state level, and some of the federal senators and reps involved in this issue. The politics are what swung the bureaucrats. The legal process is an important part. When we fought the dams, the legal process was used to put a project on hold until we could get the politics straight, which might take five years. What's happened here is just analogous to what we did back in the 70s. A combination of legal and political working hand in hand, and the political mostly with the citizens groups, getting the politicians active, have brought this whole project to a standstill and basically made it a very substantial victory. What I don't think people are focused on is that right now, the victory is totally in the political bureaucratic arena. A shift in politics, as we just pointed out, by possibly changing the composition of the Pollution Control Board or the EPA can undo much of what's just been won. And that can happen either the state or the federal level. I view this consent decree as a way of locking in a lot of the progress that's been made to date and sort of insulating it from some future political shenanigans. The political powers that be hide behind lawsuits. In other words, if something is in court, the legislature and the governor frequently don't want to mess with it until the courts are finished. So if the consent decree is accepted, we get 95% or more of what the original goal of the lawsuit and the involvement of the cities was. And we make it much more difficult for the EPA by itself, or a governor, or a senator, to undo things because there's also a legal process as well as a political process involved. So I think that's an important consideration. And I read that consent decree today and it has far more good in it than anything I could have imagined three years ago when I first got involved with this. And my involvement has been very minimal. Somebody might have seen that I appeared in Bloomington. Champagne ran the videos for many weeks on all the speakers and I was one of them. But I talked about this in the context of the dam fights we had in the 70s and the highway battles and the big truck fights we used to do. So basically, there's limited time, like a month, to look at this and see if there are any major unintended consequences. The overall situation with the state and federal actions is a substantial victory for us. If a problem arises in the future after this consent decree is passed, assuming it's passed, and I hope it is, the citizens groups and several others are still free to maneuver, oppose them any way they want, and reactivate some of the political players. That's how we won our cases. We did not have everybody sign on to the same plan. We had the same goals. But different players would operate in different arenas at different times. I don't know if this is making sense, but that's the way we did it. If the citizens group signs on to a consent decree and has to agree to not do certain things, their hands might be tied next time. Right now, if they're not a signatory, they are completely free to do what we did back in the 70s and 80s. So anyway, as far as I'm concerned, we have a pretty good victory going here. My advice would be only deal with substantive issues here. Don't nitpick it. This consent decree, unless there's something that's discovered soon that's really awful, is basically going to lock up major parts of the victory. I've seen many great conservation victories on the verge of being solidified turn into defeat when a major player refuses to accept any compromise or concession. And I hope that doesn't happen here. So I'll take any questions.
Anyone? Mayor?
I want to thank you for coming tonight and sharing your experiences.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is David Noreen.
Hi, I'm David Noreen. I have to confess, I haven't read the most recent consent decree. But what I have spent quite a bit of time reading is the agreement that was negotiated by the, the IEP A with the Dewitt County. And I found a number of things in there that I'm really concerned about and I hope they haven't carried over into what we finally end up accepting. First of all, I think there's a backdoor to still accepting PCBs into the landfill because you test at a certain level. And if it's above that level, it won't come in. But if it's below, it can. Well, all you have to do is add clean soil to contaminated soil and that dilutes the level of PCBs, so that could bring it in. Now, across the country, there's a lot of car shredders that shred. Now, across the country, there's a lot of car shredders that shred cars, and the residue is actually going into landfills to be used as ground cover because it's kind of a low-level sort of thing. And there's an article by Patrick Wade a few years ago that pointed out that Clinton landfill already has a low-level PCB permit. So, along, at the time this article was published, it mentioned that there was a representative from Summit, Illinois, who came here to Clinton and said, "Look, we've got piles of this that was left by a automobile shredder that went out of business, and PCBs are blowing around the town. We want to get rid of them. That's why we want to put them in your landfill. We need someplace to put this. We can't afford to send them to Detroit." So, is it clear that, you know, that they can't accept this? How high is high and how low is low? It's the same thing with manufactured gas plant waste. I believe the Fifth and Hill material that was trucked to Danville was not actually high-level waste. I believe it was mixed with soil because it had been extracted from the soil, so I think it was low-level waste. And so, what's the distinction between, you know, what can go in and what can't? What we do know is that manufactured gas plant waste goes right through the liner. You can do web searches, just put in MGP waste and HDPE or landfill liner or something like that, and you'll find that the EPA has a, an environmental group's fact sheet about how the manufacturer says, you know, "Don't expect this stuff to hold back MGP waste. It goes through it." So, you know, if it gets down there, we're in, we're in bad shape. That's why this coalition wants it taken out. They're worried about it going through that, that so-called impermeable landfill liner. Now, there's a lot of other questions here. Coal ash. We know that the landfill definitely wants to bring in coal ash. They're going to give a dollar or a ton extra to the Dewitt County people for bringing in coal ash. And they want to put in a railroad siding. That's right there in the agreement about Dewitt County won't do anything to stop this railroad siding come in so that they can bring in coal ash and other things by the railroad, toxic trash by railroad cars. And, actually, I read just the other week, the designer of a landfill, municipal landfill in Alabama, has been taking tons of coal ash, and he argues that municipal landfills are a great place to put it because they get slightly easier treatment under the new rulings. And so, he designed this landfill that has separate places for coal ash from different providers so that they can monitor those different things separately. It's not all mixed together. But they've taken tons of coal ash from the TVA spill in Tennessee. And he just argues that this is the way to go, is to put coal ash in municipal landfills. And I'd like to remind you that coal ash has a wide range of radioactive substances in there, at small quantities, of course, but it's, it's very bad stuff. But Clinton landfill likes coal ash because they get liquid waste, and they use the coal ash to solidify the liquid waste, so it's no longer liquid, it's a solid. I remind you that there's a whole legacy of broken promises with this Clinton landfill. At the very beginning, they said that they would never take asbestos waste. This was when it was just supposed to be a regular landfill. But after they went to Plan B and wanted to make it into a toxic landfill, they took lots of asbestos. And you can read in the most recent IEP inspection report about the number of school districts that have had asbestos taken there. Let's see. I don't know. I can respond to other questions that people brought up. It's, it's, it's just amazing when you read this actual agreement that was negotiated, not by Dewitt County. They didn't even have a lawyer at this. They just went with the IEP attorney and then with Clinton landfill. It sounds like it was a sweetheart agreement because it goes, you know, in so much detail about how Dewitt County will be so helpful in allowing this railroad siding to go over their roads. And it's an unusual agreement that, that was made with the landfill in Dewitt County because the land, the county had to agree to always support everything the landfill wanted to do because if they didn't, the landfill, the landfill operators would immediately cut off all this money that they were paying them. And so, this money has been piling up ever since, you know, the Dewitt County first started questioning some of the things that the landfill operators wanted to do. So that's why they've, the county board has been very anxious to settle this thing and get their money because that's where their budget comes from, that they, they're expecting this money to come in. And, I don't know. I just, I just urge people to go back and read that, that agreement because there's, there's amazing things in there.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is George Wismiller.
Thank you for letting me speak. I had three pages of very conciliatory text that I was going to read. I won't be reading those. I sat in here and listened to myself be condescended to again. I've put up with that kind of behavior for eight years. Well, you're too dumb. You don't understand this stuff. I've put up with being lied to by government officials. I've put up with official misconduct being ignored. I am fed up with it. And then I sat in here this evening and listened to myself be called a liar. I am fed up with it. I was the one that sent out the emails complaining about the secrecy involved here. They may be going to change that. This evening may be the beginning of the change of that. The 11th, there was a meeting. Public didn't know about it. We don't know much about it, but apparently, a lot of the senior executives involved in the coalition and the coalition attorneys, we don't know which ones. I've got an open meetings complaint filed on it. There was a document issued at that meeting. It was a summary of the consent decree. The consent decree was final at that point. That document would have been of very much interest to the public. The only reason we got a copy of it was because somebody basically slipped it to us under the table. We could have foia'd it, except it was so secret, we didn't even know it existed. I was at the Champagne City Council meeting, this last Champagne City Council meeting, along with David Holt, and this is all on tape. They said at the council meeting that the decree would be released the 28th, that's four days from now, and it would be voted on the 1st. Now, I'm a retired Champagne City employee. I'm inclined to defend the city of Champagne. I have done so on a number of occasions. Three days for the public. There's an expression for that, but there's ladies present, I won't use it. I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe that the city of Champagne would pull a stunt like this. I went up and checked with the city manager after the meeting. She looked embarrassed and said, "Yep, the 28th and the 1st." So I went home, filed a FOIA for the consent decree. And yes, it did get released. It got put on the city website the next day. That's the kind of secrecy you're dealing with here. Now, it may be changing, and that's great. But don't sit in here and call me a liar. Don't sit in here and condescend to me. I've been involved in this thing for eight years. I know as much about it as anybody. And I am fed up with it. Absol, I'm shaking, I'm so mad. I've got like $7,000, my personal funds tied up in this fight. And there's people sitting in the audience who have a lot more than that tied up in it. The idea, we were, you know, well, we weren't consulted in negotiations. Horse feathers. We had no idea at all what was going on in the negotiations. Nothing. No reports, no updates, no nothing. Complete and total blackout. At what point is it just too much? Oh, well, it would be inconvenient for the lawyers to delay this thing. It would be inconvenient for the lawyers to delay this thing so the public can know what's being done to them. We're asking for 60 days. We're not asking for you to vote this thing down. We don't think that in a couple of hours, you can adequately digest it. We think it ought to be out there for 60 days. We think, this is basically a siding. If this thing passes, there will be a chemical waste landfill over the Mohammed Aquifer. That's the bottom line on it. And Joe's got good, Mr. Hooker's got good arguments. And I think I've got good arguments, and Sherry's got good arguments. There's a lot of good arguments. They ought to be heard by the public. There ought to be meetings. This ought to be handled like a siding. If the US EPA or the Illinois EPA wanted to do something similar to this, allow a chemical waste landfill over the Mohammed Aquifer, they would be required by law to have a lengthy public comment period and to allow, to have meetings to allow for public input. A website to post the public comment. But Champagne was going to do it in three days. That's what's going on here. And I don't appreciate the attitude. I've been at this for nine, for eight years, and some of these people out here have been at it longer. I've taken some real serious hits, lost a job over this. Some of these people out here have lost more. And we're getting pretty fed up with being talked down to, and we're getting pretty fed up with being, "Oh, you don't know what you're talking about. It's okay to put MGP's over." I gotta be quiet. I'm gonna lose my temper here in a minute. Thank you very much.
So, finally is Chris Stor.
Good evening. My name's Chris Stor. I live a block from the city building in historic East Urbana. Like many of the early speakers, I am appalled about the burial of chemical waste above the Mohammed Aquifer. They pose a significant and persistent threat to a precious water resource, a sole-source aquifer. And I don't envy you your decision with regard to the consent decree. However, I would like to add a little context to what you're considering. There are 3,430, at least, unlined landfills in the state of Illinois. I'll repeat that figure. 3,430 unlined landfills. Forty-four percent of those, that's 1,524 landfills, lie over shallow aquifers. Again, these are unlined landfills. Some of them covered with as little as two feet or maybe three feet of soil. Some of those landfills, including some in this very county, lie over the Mohammed Aquifer. The landfill under discussion, the Clinton landfill, represents a significant improvement, more than a significant improvement, a far greater improvement in waste isolation. The liners have means of extracting the leachates and even checking below the bottom of the, of the liners with respect to the chemical waste landfill. Again, these are cemeteries of waste, and what becomes of these after the period of monitoring is, I agree with Mr. Hooker, something that should be revisited by legislation because excavation and removal, or even further monitoring of these landfills after their designated period, remains a mystery and something that is not very well-considered. But I return to you about those 3,430 landfills that also have no monitoring and pose a threat. I, I, I think that the consent decree seems like a reasonable compromise and a way of dealing with the terrible issues that are, that have to be considered. However, I would suggest to you that you might add in your discussions that all the wells, monitoring wells, including the replacement monitoring wells, should be considered as part of the monitoring, overall monitoring, not merely the ones that are listed in the, in the consent decree. I would also suggest that if they're going to put a one-foot, additional one-foot clay layer on top of the manufactured gas plant waste, that the leak testing be performed around the cover edges, which is where, or where the leaking is, leakage is most likely to occur. And I think that concludes my remarks.
Bill?
Yeah, you sound like you know what you're talking about. I'm not sure what your background is in this, but do you know part of an answer to Charlie's question earlier about what happens over time with the MGP waste? And would some of it leach out? Would that be collected in a leachate system and disposed of differently? Do you know anything about that?
Well, my understanding is, as long as they're pulling leachate that exceeds the background levels of the groundwater, they're going to have to continue their, their pumping and extraction and treatment. And that can go on for as long as the IEP inspectors decide that it, that it needs to go along. They, if you have a pretty conservative inspector, that, that could last nearly indefinitely. I, I, I can't speak to the regulations, but that's my understanding through private discussions.
Diane, and then Dennis.
Just for the record, could you state your professional background?
I'm an engineering geologist, and I've spent, I've been working with landfills since 1974.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis?
Well, yeah, that was my question, too. Chris Stor is probably the most knowledgeable man about what to do with a landfill and how to seal it and what to look for as far as a leak that I know. He happens to be a neighbor of mine, and I've heard some, some conversations about it, and I would say he's a qualified person to comment.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Okay, so, any further council discussion or motions? Eric?
So, my question, I guess I'll, I'll just make a, I mean, I will make a comment and then ask a question. So, the question is, how hard is it to pass legislation? And I think the answer is, if you are really, it may not be so hard to pass legislation for clean water. So I'm just looking at the legislative history of Carroll's and Scott's bill. So they, it passed the House by 100, which forbids any PCBs and MGP's in any landfill above the Mohammed Aquifer and/or permits, prohibits putting them there. And so it passed the, it passed the House by 104 to 10, and it passed the Senate by, the Senate version, by 57 to 0. So I think that if you're talking about protecting water, it should be possible. And you make your case, and you make your case carefully and with a broad coalition, I don't think we should be discouraged about doing it. But now, the second question that I have is, what is, what is the process from here? Will this come back to us as an action item? I assume it's not an action item tonight.
Well, actually, it is an action item tonight, and we would be voting on it, if you pass it tonight, we would be voting on it on September 8th.
Ah, yes, okay. Well, I, I'm ready to move, sending it to full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
So it's been moved, Eric. Seconded by Diane. Discussion, Charlie?
I'm not in favor. I, I think some questions have been raised, and I'd just as soon get the answers. the answers, and prefer to keep this in committee.
Any further discussion? Bill?
I do still have some questions about what type of waste would be allowed, but I think I could get the answers to those questions by next week, so I'll probably support this.
Aaron?
I was wondering if the, as Chris talked about the, well, I think the first speaker, I forget, I keep forgetting his name, but he talked about the PCB levels being sort of watered down by adding clean soil to that.
David Noreen.
David Noreen, thanks, David. Does the bill that was passed prohibit that?
Yes.
Yeah, somebody who knows the answer to it. Do we have some, I thought the bill that was passed, that Carroll and Scott worked on, said that there can be, you can't put anything.
Well, let me, I'm familiar with the bill. I might have a moment to explain it, and it didn't deal actually with PCBs. It dealt with manufactured gas plant waste source material with the higher toxic levels and indicates that that must go into a hazardous waste landfill, that it cannot go into a municipal wastelandfill. It did not deal with, doesn't mention the sole-source aquifer or any aquifer for that matter, but it does say that manufactured gas plant waste with those higher toxic constituents in it must go in a hazardous wastelandfill, which we thought was a major improvement. It wasn't the bill we, that was initially offered, and, but it's another piece of the puzzle and another reason why I think we've gotten to the point with the landfill wanting to settle the matter. And so I think that was very helpful. But that's what the law, the bill that was passed actually addressed.
So we don't have a way to, at this point, it is possible then for these, something with the PCB levels, they could be put into, if they were down below the levels that David talked about, they could indeed be put into?
Yeah, if they're, if they're below these federal concentrations, that's correct. They're not covered by the Toxic Substance Control Act. I can't speak to the kinds of techniques that can be brought to bear to make otherwise unacceptable PCBs acceptable in a municipal solid wastelandfill, but I think that's correct. There are certain methodologies that are accepted to dilute the PCBs and make them acceptable in a conventional landfill. And again, getting back to my earlier point, we, well, another possible legislation would be to ban federally regulated PCBs over a sole-source aquifer. There's any number of combinations we could look at. Our goal is to ban any landfill over the aquifer, not concern ourselves with the, with the waste stream. We don't have a high degree of confidence that the current regulations with regard to municipal solid wastelandfills are protective enough, and so we think we need to ban any new landfills over the aquifer. We think that's the only sensible approach.
I had one other question for Chris, if he's still here, because he mentioned these other landfills, 3,430 of them in Illinois, 1,500 landfills over shallow aquifers. Do any of them have MGP's or PCB's in them? And what is the history of them leaking into the aquifers?
That's a good question, Aaron, and I intended to bring that up when I spoke and forgot. There's coal waste in probably many of these landfills, including the ones locally, because people burn coal in their houses and boilers in industrial places. And they took them to these landfills that were at one time on the edge of town. They were old dumps. Later, they became landfills when they started putting daily cover on them and finally closed. In effect, they're just a covered dump. So those ways with those particular problems, leachable ions, cad ions, organics, and what are in the unlined landfills, and again, some of them are over water, aquifers, shallow and deep.
And so do we have any history or data of them, do they leach into the water?
Yes.
How often do they do it? Do they actually pollute the water? Is there ways to purify it after it gets? I mean, I'm just trying to understand why you brought that point. You brought that point up for a reason, I thought, about them leaking and possibly leaking.
Well, I raised the issue to point out that this is a better design for, for a waste isolation than what we've been using up to 1993. And, and no, most of these landfills are, hardly any of them are monitored in any way, and so we don't really know what levels of contamination are going on. There are so a few researchers out looking at this, trying to find different ways of doing this, because putting in a monitoring well is expensive, and nobody wants to go looking for trouble, as it was. Did that answer your question?
Well, I'm just concerned that, you know, it sounds to me like the writing's on the wall that these, even if you try to pull all this stuff up, we don't know how much of it, it's been there for a couple of years already. It's already probably started percolating downward or going, I don't know.
Well, it's probably, if it was, most likely, they would have encountered it in the leachate catchment, because it has several layers of membranes, 60 millimeter, 60 mil flexible membrane, and then sand, and then another membrane and ways of pipes to catch the leachate to see if, if there is, if there is, if there is leaching that's going through the cover, as David was concerned about.
So what you're saying and describing now is that we have this big tub, if you will, and it's got a liner in it, and it's got these other devices or other mechanisms below it for us to test it to see if there's some leaking that's actually taking place before it ever gets into the aquifer. That's what, that's the setup?
Intercept it before, the idea is to, the intent is to intercept it before it gets out below the landfill and into the, into the surrounding ground, before it even gets into the clay material below the landfill in that, which is so many feet above the aquifer.
And as the average layperson, I certainly don't understand it the way that you do, but it's helping me paint a picture of what we're dealing with now. Ideally, we wouldn't want it there, period. I mean, Mr. Hooker's saying that, we're all saying that, but since that's what we're dealing with right now, I'm just having a hard time seeing how it could be excavated or remediated without still leaving something there or still disturbing some sort of catch-all that would prevent it from leaking. So that's helpful for me to at least understand that process of where we are, what we're dealing with, and there are some mechanisms in place to try to catch it. If, if this stuff gets into the aquifer, if, I don't know how much it would have to be, how, is it something that can be cleaned up? Is it something that, that would just pollute the entire aquifer? I don't know. I don't, I don't have enough knowledge about this. I'm just trying to get an idea of what we would be dealing with if this stuff leached into the aquifer.
I refer back to what Mr. Hooker said earlier, that measures to, to deal with that after the aquifer is contaminated are difficult, expensive, and probably not very satisfactory.
Aaron, some of the questions you raised are also addressed in the letter from, that's in our packet, from the Attorney General, where she states that the Mohammed Aquifer is at least 170 feet below the base of the chemical waste unit, the landfill, or 170 feet below the geo-membrane in place. So it's, that also gives an idea of the distance.
Dennis?
You know, and for, I mean, I think that most of the city council members realize that our own local landfill has been monitored and tested for, I don't know, 28 years or farther than that, and has had leakage. It's situated right against the Salt Creek tributary. I mean, we have, right here in our own town, a model example of how leachate from an aquifer that leaks has to be dealt with. We have test wells that are monitored every year. We pay a certain amount of money every year to do that. I don't know, I can't remember if it's $24,000 or $17,000 a year for monitoring. We've had to build a trench between the leaking location and the creek to then direct and draw the leachate away from the creek and collect it. And I can't remember where we take it, I can't, but...
I think it goes to the, to the waste treatment plant.
Yeah, so we have to treat it, and we do so. So, I mean, it is possible to, I mean, and this is an ongoing issue of responsibility.
Most likely to leak out the side rather than the bottom.
Yes. Yeah, that's the thing. It's leaking, and we can see it, and we were able to monitor it. Of course, we're worried about what's going down below the whatever membrane there might be potentially. Eric?
Am I right to take from what your testimony, that possibly the cumulative effect of all of the unlined landfills over the Mohammed Aquifer may in fact be a comparable or even greater hazard than the, than the Clinton landfill?
I, the answer, we really don't know the answer to that. In some cases, you know, they're looking at leakage in some of these landfills, but for the most part, if only a few. And no, we don't know.
Okay, so we're having a really good conversation. Two weeks, we should probably decide whether we could actually come to some kind of agreement, but if we're going to make a motion that we're going to, like, take it to the city council, or was it, the motion was to, yeah, I think we should not, we should not say that we're going to take that motion with a recommendation of approval. I think we should make no recommendation at this point.
So that'd be a, would that be a friendly amendment?
That's what, yeah, I'll make that as a friendly amendment to the original motion.
Well, I guess I'm asking the maker of the motion if it's friendly.
Yeah, the maker of the motion. I don't think that'll change the outcome, so if the secondor would be willing, I'd be willing to move it without, without a recommendation.
We're recommending that we send this to council with no recommendation.
Correct. That's right, but for action.
It's forwarding it to council, yes.
Forwarding it to council.
I'd accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, so the motion before the council is to advance this resolution to the city council with no recommendation. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Well, and the idea would be to get the questions answered that have been raised tonight in the next two weeks.
Yeah, I took it as a not-hostile amendment.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So in the interest of time, the chair is recommending that agenda item number seven be moved to the next committee of the whole. I think, pardon me?
No.
No.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Well, how about the next one? The farther, the better, in my opinion.
[laughing]
Am I prejudicing myself?
You're not allowed to have to debate this year.
Oh, yeah.
Presiding.
So I, I guess, okay.
The 28th would be fine, but both of us will be out of town on the 14th.
Okay.
No, it's September.
Yeah, September, right.
Okay, so the chair is recommending that agenda item number seven may be moved to the committee of the whole meeting on September 28th. Does anybody object to that?
No.
Somebody want to move that?
Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion that ordinance 2015-08-091 concerning Transportation Network Company Services be moved to the committee of the whole meeting on the September 28th.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. All those, Aaron?
So moving this to the 28th, like, a whole month from now, and believe me, I, you know, I know people have to do things in the morning to get up at 5:00 and stuff, but this means that this company is going to be able to operate for another month without any oversight, basically, or we won't be able to move this, because we, this is just going to be committee of the whole on the 28th. We won't even have a city council to actually do any action items. So basically, they will be able to function for another two months or so without any oversight or regulation or whatever from us. Is that what I'm, is that accurate?
I'll defer to Beth, maybe.
Yeah, so the Transportation Network Company that's currently operating, they've actually been operating in this area since March. So they would continue to operate in the manner that they are and in the manner that the state currently regulates them.
And I think the suggestion here is that it being seven minutes after 10 and with several other agenda items, the only way to give this the consideration it deserves would be to defer it to another meeting.
Well, we don't make good decisions after 9:30 anyway, so I don't know.
10:30?
All right, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. All right, so agenda item number six, an ordinance number 2015-08-090, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, a portion of 108 East Water Street.
Yes.
Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Brad Bennett. I'm assistant city engineer, and Elizabeth Tyler is here with me to talk to you about the proposed sale of 108 East Water Street.
Hey, Brad. Hold on just a second. Is it required that we have a presentation on this, or can we just stipulate that everyone here read the memo? I mean, Libby, are you comfortable with that, given the hour?
Sure, yeah.
Move to sense of council recognition for approval. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it.
Thank you for your presentation.
Good job, Brad.
Thank you for your presence.
I did have a correction, but we can do it next week. It's...
Shall I read the next two? Mike, Mike? Mike, you want me to read the next two?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Mike has to recuse himself. Ordinance number 2015-892, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for SOILL Restaurant Systems LLC, doing business as Dottie's at 1901 South Philo Road, Suite B. Mayor?
We didn't have anybody object to this at the public hearing, and we've met with the owner, and he owns a number of establishments in several states, seems to be a very responsible business owner.
Move approval. Recognize Mike. By the way, I needed to recuse myself from that. Go ahead, who? Bill? I took it, I took it.
Mike asked Charlie.
Yeah, just for clarification, is this the same one that we approved for the next?
At the Pines.
At the Pines, yeah.
Yes.
So it's the same owner, they aren't doing that one anymore.
Yeah, no, they couldn't get that rented, so.
Okay.
We approved a liquor license for them, but they never got their lease. Well, they had to start over again.
Okay. So of the five G2s, not, just, doesn't seem like any of them are operating yet. Just wanted to clarify that. Is that correct? We approved three on University?
I think Emma's is operating.
Oh, but they don't have a G2 license yet. They have a G1.
Emma's?
Yeah.
Hot Spot is operating.
And, well, the five, the four that we've approved doesn't include Hot Spot, because they were grandfathered in, apparently. So that was kind of my question, is that Hot Spot would have to, at some point, get a G2, because they were supposed to be grandfathered in. So the numbers will have to be corrected eventually for Hot Spot, so maybe just have the attorney look at that. And so there's three on University Avenue we've approved, one on Philo Road next to Burger King, I think, somewhere in there, and this would be the fifth. be the fifth, and I just wanted to note that none of them are open yet, so, it's hard to tell what the impact of these are when none of them are open.
Dan?
Just a little more clarification, there's, this would actually be the third gaming parlor operating in the Sunny Crest area. Hot Spot is one, this is another one that's going into the, actually, the family video store, and then the third is the one we just approved across the street in the Green Street Realty Strip Mall on Philo, across from Sunny Crest, so, that puts three in a fairly concentrated area, which strikes me as being just about enough for that's, that loc- area.
Mayor?
I would point out that our ordinance specifies the distances, and so, we do not have an unlimited number, so, we've probably already hit what the limit would be in that area.
Right, right.
Eric? Did, did you have a motion?
Oh, I was just gonna muse on how many G three licenses in Sunny Crest make, the Sunny Crest Casino.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll do that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to Senate Council of Recognition for Approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Next is ordinance twenty fifteen eight ninety-three, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section three forty-three, increasing the number of Class G one liquor licenses for A-plus entertainment, doing business as A-plus VIP Lounge at two fourteen West Main. Mayor?
This one doesn't require a public hearing, which we didn't have, but we think they meet the standards, so I would recommend approval. They're in existence, their business, they're just sort of changing their type of license.
This is, oh, this is for their karaoke lounge?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
They've been in, in existence for a few years now.
Okay, I guess I'll make the motion that we send it to council with approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Dennis, seconded by Aaron, to Senate Council of Recognition for Approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and the third of these is ordinance twenty, ordinance twenty fifteen eight ninety-four, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section three forty-three, increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses for upscale entertainment group LLC, doing business as Flight Ultra Lounge, one forty-two Lincoln Square, Suite one thirty-eight. Mayor?
This replaces a previous business, which was eighty-eight Broadway, so, it's just a regular liquor license.
Okay, any, any further details? I assume the owners are new owners, or are they existing owners somewhere else?
I don't know that, but they, they seem to have passed all the background checks, so, I don't have a problem with it.
Is there a motion?
Is this a bar?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, I think it's a, yeah.
It's a retail.
It's like, eighty-eight Broadway was a, a place that served drinks, alcohol, and food, and this is the same type of thing. It's a Class A liquor license.
Dennis?
Yeah, okay, well, this is right in the heart of Lincoln Square, in a location that has had a very difficult time getting anything to go there and stick, so, good luck, and I, I recommend that I send this to council with recommendation of approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Dennis, seconded by Aaron, to Senate Council. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Back to you. No, thank you, Charlie. So, agenda item number eleven, we have three ordinances. Do these need to be taken separately?
In the omnibus fashion.
Counsel, do these need to be taken separately?
It's not gonna save very much.
It's probably better to do them individually.
That's fine, well, I mean, this is committee action, is it anyway?
We're already wasted time.
So, here's my other question is, does anybody feel like they need a briefing on these?
No.
So...
I, I have a question about one of them, I guess.
All right, so, we're gonna forego the briefing and just have questions, if that's all right with you?
That's fine.
All right, we're gonna cut your pay because of this, so...
Dennis?
Okay, so, I'm just, just, just like, looking at the property that's on Five Hill Street Court, and, you know, we've been, we've recently had a request to upzone next door to that, and it was referred to, the court was referred to as, you know, maybe in transition, I don't know, is the expectation that we're, we're gonna see a, a new house, it's gonna be an R two, continue to be an R two zoning, is that correct?
I'm not totally familiar with the rezoning in that area, I think...
It's R two.
It's R two currently, I'm pretty sure, so...
I think Libby's gonna speak on this matter, okay.
To answer your question, Dennis, this area is shown as continuing in single-family use, an R two, and the, it will be rebuilt with a single-family home, and Hill Court will continue single-family. Properties that are, were looked at for rezoning were further to the east along Lincoln Avenue, so...
Right, right, so, okay, so, it doesn't really, it's not really affected that much directly by conversations we've had of rezoning other properties on Lincoln, so, thanks.
My question was...
Yeah, Aaron?
How soon are we going to cut the grass around it and actually remove the house and stuff, because I've gotten several complaints about it.
We're actually in progress with working with several contractors to make sure that that happens, hopefully, by the end of the week.
Okay, and the house on Dublin, trying to envision exactly, it's, so, there's several houses on Dublin that we've done, right? And this one, are all of these gonna be on like, the same, same timeframe, or is there a timeframe on these?
The, the house on Dublin is probably going to end up going first, that's the, the demolition process has been, at least the, the pre-demolition process has been in progress for a while, so, that one would probably go first, but the two that would be demolished as part of the blight reduction program, still be a little bit more time, but according to the tri-party agreement that governs the blight reduction program, we are sort of under a time crunch there, we have to close on those by the end of September, so, it would definitely be, it'd be in our favor to have those demolished relatively soon, but it would probably be after the thirteen oh six and a half West Dublin property.
Charlie? Oh, I'm ready to start moving these if others are. Okay, I'll move ordinance twenty fifteen eight ninety-five, an ordinance authorizing the sale of thirteen oh six, one and a half, and a half, West Dublin Street, to council of recognition for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Charlie and seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it.
Ordinance number twenty fifteen eight ninety-six, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, Five Hill Street Court, to council of recognition for approval.
A second.
It's been moved by Charlie and seconded by Aaron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
And the last one, ordinance twenty fifteen eight ninety-seven, ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, thirteen ten West Hill Street, to council of recognition for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Charlie and seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it. Any further business come for the committee of the whole? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.